All the planning commission meeting to order April 22nd, 2021. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the minutes from the April 8th, 2021 meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that the commission approve the meeting minutes from the hearing on April 8th, 2021.
I'll second.
Should we roll call, please?
I am currently troubleshooting an audio issue with Karen.
Is there anyone else that can call the roll call? Okay.
How about if I just call it?
Thanks, Scott.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
And Commissioner Brown?
Yes. So I'm unable to see the chambers. Do you have?
Mr. Chair, we have a meaningful number of people in the chambers for a change today.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, this is Scott DeLeon. If I could just make an announcement. The 9:10 a.m. item for use permit 19-46. We are going to be recommending continuation of that item until May the 13th. And we've attempted to notify everybody that had expressed concern or interest in this project and to make them aware of our plan this morning. So just wanted to get that out there that we do intend to continue that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll call our first item, major use permit 19-47. Owner applicant, Workright Building LLC, proposed project, one type six non-volatile cannabis manufacturing license, one cannabis processor license, and one cannabis distributor license consisting of 48,100 square feet of processing area, 690 square feet of manufacturing area, and 1,010 square feet of distribution area located within an existing 60,000 square foot building. Location 4615 Workright Circle, Lakeport, California, APN 008-032-51, environmental evaluation categorical exemption CE 21-06.
We'll hand it over to staff.
Victor, we can't hear you.
Can everybody hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, do I sound clearly?
Not really.
Okay. No?
That is a little bit clearer.
Bear with me here, I'm trying to make sure I sound clear, you're messing with the settings real quick.
Victor, could we ask that you speak up, please? It's a little muffled in the chambers. Thank you.
Yeah, of course, I think it might be the mic that's not picking up clearly, so I'll try to speak loud. Is this okay if I speak at this level?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect, so I'm going to go ahead and share my screen real quick, let me pull up a presentation. I do have a presentation prepared for this. So let's see. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes, we can see the screen.
Yeah.
So I better get started, so. I'm presenting a use permit. The applicant and owner is Workright Building LLC. And it's major use permit UP 19-47 and categorical exemption CE 21-06. So to kind of start things off here, what I'll be going over today is the permit request, the project description, describe the site a little bit, and then dive into the project analysis, and then as well as the recommendations for this project. But before I actually get started, I do want to just make some clarifications here. In the conditions of approval attachment, there is two conditions in the general section A, item 42 and 43 that are duplicates, so disregard one of those. In section K, the transportation and traffic in item one, that condition applies for commercial cannabis cultivation. This project does not include commercial cannabis cultivation, so that item will be removed. And then section L, item six, that condition also is in ordinance for commercial cannabis cultivation and is not included in manufacturing, processing, or distribution. So I just wanted to put that in record that those conditions will need to be removed. To start off, the project description here, the applicant seeks approval of a major use permit to allow the following licenses. The first one is a type six non-volatile cannabis manufacturing. The second one is a cannabis processor license. And then finally, a type 11 cannabis distributor license as well. So just a little key information, the proposed project will be conducted in an existing 60,000 square foot building, and no grading or expansion of the building, or tree removal is proposed. And if you look at the right there, I do have a zoning map to kind of give an idea of where the project is located. And then staff did determine that the project qualifies for the licenses under Article 27 and complies with subsections AAA, AU, AB, and AX, which are in Article 27. The permit request, the applicants are seeking approval of a major use permit to complete the following activities on site. So we have the 48,100 square foot of processing area. We have 690 square feet of manufacturing area. And then 4,810 square foot of distribution area. And the site is approximately 2.68 miles west from a community to growth foundry. And I just want to do a quick check here, can you guys still hear me clearly?
Yes, I can.
Okay. So just to kind of jump into it real quick, staff is recommending approval of the major use permit, UP 19-47, with the conditions that are outlined in full in the staff report and the conditions of approval document. So to dive into the site description a little bit, this property is accessed from Highland Springs Road. As you can see there, there's an image of the existing building. The property is sized approximately 4.30 acres, and it is located in planned development commercial, which is a zoning that supports the licenses that the applicant is applying for. And again, all manufacturing, processing, and distribution activities will be conducted within the existing and permitted building and using existing utilities as well. And then unfortunately, I couldn't get this to clear up a little bit, but it is in the attachments. It's just an indication of the site plan to give a little visual, so you can kind of see the layout of the project details within the existing building. And in terms of the project analysis, so staff reviewed that the project was concurrent with the general plan, the area plan, and the zoning ordinance. And again, cannabis manufacturing, processing, and distribution is a permitted use in the PDC planned development commercial upon issuance of a use permit. And just to take a little closer look at the property here, the proposed use is consistent with the land use. There is no new grading or expansion of the building, nor tree removal is proposed as a project as mentioned before. And the project parcel does have existing utilities and is already developed. Staff did conduct a site visit, so there are some photos that I'd like to share with you guys just so you guys can take a closer look at what the facility entails. So here we can take a look at the Workright Building from the front entrance. This is from the parking lot looking towards the building. And this is looking north towards the parking lot, and the buildings there on that left-hand side there as well. And this is the interior of the building. As you can see, there's some storage that is in there, some items. But staff has conducted another site visit, and the building is empty. Then here's a view of the loading area, that's located at the kind of the rear part of the property. As you can see there, they do have some existing kind of coverage for the vehicles to go under. And then moving on to the California Environmental Quality Act. So for this project, the major use permit submitted by Workright Building is recommended to be categorized under a Class 1 categorical exemption, as staff determined that there are no impacts to the environment that are expected from implementation of the project. So to just dive a little bit into that, a little bit deeper, the proposed project is located in a previously developed parcel. The building will be used for the manufacturing of the license types that have been described earlier in this presentation. All of the proposed activities will occur within the building, and no exterior construction or grading is proposed for the completion of this project. And only interior maintenance work will be needed. But of course, the applicant will be required to obtain the building permits for interior work. And the property has an existing truck delivery area, has an existing paved parking lot with approximately 95 spaces for employees. However, the project does propose a full-time max employees of 12 with respect to seasonal employees that will be shuttled in or encouraged to carpool if additional employees are needed during the peak of the seasons. The property does have an existing well and an existing septic system, which there is a condition that the applicant will need to adhere to environment or health requirements for utilization of those resources. And the proposed project will have approximately two to six deliveries, shipments and distribution trips per week, and a minimum of 12 full-time vehicle trips per day due to employees and staff. The access site is also existing and paved, which is approximately 37 feet wide, that will safely handle any traffic generated by the Workright project, and no fugitive best emission impacts are expected due to transportation. And then additionally, the existing building will be equipped with filtration systems that will prevent the movement of odors, chemicals, and pesticides and other airborne contaminants out of or into the existing building. Therefore, staff is recommending a categorical exemption and sees the project fits with this class. And then in terms of the major use permit findings, staff did identify that the project does meet Article 51 major use permit findings, as well as the sections on the right there, section AAA, AU, AB, and AX. And staff has determined that the proposed project complies with the major use permit. So I think we're having a little bit of technical difficulties, so is it possible to call in a quick break? Two minutes maybe to fix these technical issues?
Yes, I was just about to ask the same question.
Okay.
Would that be possible, commissioners, if we take a two-minute job so that we can clear up this technical issue with his phone?
Yes. Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Fine with me, I want to make sure people in the chambers can hear as well.
Fantastic, thank you so much.
If I may, the date.
Which is the 13th?
Commissioner?
13th of May.
Commissioners? My mic went, there it is, okay. So for item two, if you're going to take action on item two, that would be at the time that item two is taken up on the agenda. So that would be when you decide on a date. If you choose to take staff's recommendation to continue, and there's a motion to continue, that's when the date will be determined.
Kristin? Hello, hello, can you hear us?
Yes.
Is that clear, or?
It's better than earlier, yeah.
I'd say it's a little bit better, yeah.
Okay, I apologize for that. Would you guys like me to, I know I kind of went through the majority of the presentation, but would you guys like me to kind of backtrack or continue moving forward with the presentation?
I'm okay with moving forward unless if anybody didn't catch everything. I was able to hear, I'm not clear on if the chambers was able to hear the entire presentation.
Mr. Chair, it was audible, but at times a bit challenging. It's much easier to hear you or Commissioner Chavez than it is to hear the presentation.
Okay, would you like Victor to start the presentation over?
No, I can definitely start from the beginning.
No need to start over.
I agree, I don't think it's necessary, Victor.
We've been following with the report on the screen as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for asking.
So if I may, I'll go ahead and start off where I left off. So as I was explaining earlier, that staff did confirm that the project did meet the major use permit findings, as well as Article 27, which is those sections there on the right. And let me share my screen because I forgot I was not sharing my screen. Okay. So here's the recommendations. Staff is recommending approval of the major use permit, UP 19-47. And the staff report fully outlines those conditions of approval and attachment for. Some of those are the requirements that the applicant will need to obtain the applicable federal, state, and county agency permits for air quality. They will be required to have an air filtration system. And then as well as, you know, water quality, they'll need to obtain the federal and state agency permits as well. And of course, some timing and mitigation for, I apologize, timing for the permit. The proposed permit expiration would be coming 2031. So that concludes my presentation. The applicant, and I believe the consultant should be present as well, and I myself is present to answer any questions that the commission or the public may have.
Thank you, Victor.
Thank you, Victor. Do we have any questions from commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I just have a minor correction to mention to Victor, and it is minor. On page two, at the second-to-last paragraph, there's a reference to during peak season, the number of vehicle trips is approximately two to six deliveries. That must be per day or per week, it can't be the only number of deliveries within the entire peak season.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, that's it.
Does the applicant have anything they'd like to add?
Mr. Chair, it looks like we do have the applicant in chambers. When you approach the podium, if you could just state your first and last name.
Alicia Russell.
Okay.
Good morning, commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. My name is Alicia Russell, and I'm the Director of Operations for Workright Building LLC, doing business as ProFarms. I'm happy to be here today to speak to you, not only for professional reasons, but also because this is very personal to me. I grew up in Lakeport. In fact, I'm a fifth-generation Lake County resident and a third-generation graduate of Clear Lake High School in Lakeport. Lake County is my home. I remember when the Workright Building was built, and I remember the excitement and the growth potential that a manufacturing facility of that size meant to the economic development of this area. I also remember when it closed. Though the building underwent several incarnations in the years that followed, none utilized the building to its full potential. Under early activation of use, ProFarms has repurposed the Workright Building into a cannabis processing and manufacturing facility. Getting a building that old ready for a rebirth meant there was a lot of deferred maintenance to address, and we used local contractors for those services. We were, of course, limited in the scope of what we were able to do under the terms of early activation, but we managed to tackle quite a few cosmetic improvements. And during that time, we established local supply chains to fulfill our needs. And today, in total, we rely on more than 30 local businesses to support our day-to-day operations. Approval of the use permit will allow us to obtain building permits needed to upgrade our aging mechanical systems. The heart of our operations is our employees, the majority of whom are Lake County residents. Employees of the Workright Building have compensation packages that include access to health insurance and 401K. We strive to provide an inclusive environment and encourage our employees to provide feedback on their work environment and offer input for improvements. Employee feedback has led to workstation improvements such as anti-fatigue mats, ergonomic seating, and an employee wellness zone where employees have access to exercise equipment. We maintain high standards of cleanliness and provide the ability for all employees to maintain social distancing. ProFarms also believes in community support, and we've donated over $15,000 to local nonprofits, as well as having donated approximately one ton of fresh produce to area food donation resources. ProFarm employees share in the company's commitment to community, and we formed an ad hoc volunteer team that's available for public events to provide boots-on-the-ground assistance. We are also members of the Lake County Chamber of Commerce, the Lake County Cannabis Alliance, and we participate in the Certified Tourism Ambassador Program. We've accomplished all of this in less than nine months under the early activation of use. And for that, we would like to offer our sincerest thanks and gratitude to the Community Development Department. Early activation gave us a head start on our operations and initiated the ripple effect of cash flow into our community during a time when it was desperately needed. If we can accomplish this much in a short period of time, imagine what we'll be able to do if our use permit is approved today. We appreciate your consideration, commissioners, and again, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Do the commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
I do not have any questions at this time.
No questions at this time, Mr. Chair?
No questions.
No questions?
Okay, thank you, let's go ahead and open up public comments.
Mr. Chair, if I may, did you guys want to start with the Zoom, or did you want to start with public here in chambers?
We can start in the chambers.
Thank you.
Christina, could we see a show of hands how many people might want to speak on this issue? It affects the timing that we do with the terms of comments.
Okay, so we have three members of the public, four that want to speak on behalf of item number one. So you can approach the podium, please be aware that there's a three-minute time limit. Please be sure to state your first and last name. And in between people that are leaving the podium, there will be sanitation in place, so.
Very good, my name is Bill Brunetti, I live at 4750 George Road in Lakeport. You know, I find myself in an unusual circumstance today. I'm here to speak in support of this program and against another one that might be coming up this afternoon. But I think it's important that a citizen ought to come forward and at least talk about something when something is done right. And I think ProFarms has done an excellent job in repurposing the Workright Building, bringing jobs to Lake County. I've talked to an awful lot of people that live around there, that work around there. I haven't heard one negative comment about this. There are no odors that I know of coming out of it, and I live in the proximity there. I spend an awful lot of time at the airport as a pilot. And the other thing is, the building was built for that, you know? There's a lot of trips going in and out of there, and a lot of people. That road is designed for that, Highland Springs is designed for that. I think they're a great addition to the community, and so I'm speaking in support for them today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And just a moment before you approach, we're going to have Sam go ahead and clean that, so just a moment. Thank you. Please be sure to state your first and last name. Thank you.
Nancy Razika, here representing Arrow Acres today. We own property on three sides of this building. I, at the last minute, got a letter before you. And I'd like to get in the record some of the points in that letter. There's a lot of history here. Workright Products was in the old packing sheds in Finley. And they developed a showered door that was rimless. And they got into Hyatt Hotels, and to this day, I think of them when I'm in a Hyatt Hotel and I open it, nice, clear, heavy showered door. Did that had its roots in Lake County, in those packing sheds in Finley. They decided since they lived in the Bay Area, there was a new industrial park at the Napa Airport. Their son, Mark, was taking flying lessons and was the sales manager for the company nationwide to Hawaii. And he wanted to be able to fly in and out of the office to visit clients, and that they would go to the Napa Airport. Some of us got together and encouraged them to stay here. And Arrow Acres Sky Park at the airport got developed with state, federal, and local funds. We, Arrow Acres, sold the property for this site to Workright for $1.50 to keep them here. There were soon 125 people working out there. They decided it was time for them to retire, and they sold the company to a firm from Kansas, I think it was. And after about a year, they moved the firm to Kansas, and that left us without those 125 jobs pumping money into our economy. It's a well-designed, attractive, I think it's the sexiest industrial building in Lake County. And it's good to see it thriving again. And I got very excited at one point because I saw some, maybe it was a semi-truck over there on the south side near our property, and I thought, if that thing is containing something in that damn cannabis operation that might drip on our land, we might have to do a cleanup. we might have to do a cleanup, God forbid." Well, I can walk up here today because I use a cannabis product that doesn't smell like skunk on my knees that helps me walk.
Ma'am, we are out of the three-minute time slot allotted.
Enough. Read the rest of my letter. I'm in support of the project. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks to Sam, our designated cleanser there.
Good morning. My name is Pamela Harpster, and I'm the Branch Manager of Management Connections for a staffing agency here in Lakeport. And we cover Lake, Sonoma, and Mendocino Counties. And I've made a couple of visits over there at Pro Farms, observed, you know, how the working conditions are. I'll be working with them to help with them with their local staffing. And my goal is to bring in local employees to work there. I will tell you that I've got a lot of employees in different manufacturing scenarios, and that has got to be the cleanest and the safest that I have seen. And so I just really am in great support of this project, and I do hope that, without any hindrance at all, that you approve their operations permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. Be sure to state your first and last name. You don't have three minutes.
Mark Razika. And I second what all these people's observations have been. I'm really impressed with Pro Farms. And I hear a lot of people saying they want... They're going to support projects, you know, community projects and help raise funds and stuff. And Pro Farms has stepped up and done that, so we're glad to have them here. So I support the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak on this agenda item? We got one more. Just give them just a moment. Good morning.
Good morning. Nice to be in front of all you folks. My name is Joe Perdue. I live at 4426 George Road. I have two acres that border the property that is part of the vineyard on the west side of the Workright Building, which I helped build and work in for many years when it was first built. I... Maybe I've got my wires mixed up, but from what I read in the paperwork that was sent to me, there was going to be an outdoor grow on the property, part of the vineyard. Am I mixed up on that?
I think you're looking at a later agenda item, sir, rather than this particular item. There is another George Road item on the agenda today.
Okay.
So it would be best to speak when that publicly noticed item is up.
Okay, so I do have my wires crossed then.
Well, you're welcome to speak, of course, but it's the wrong agenda item, I believe, by how you prefaced that.
Well, from everything I've heard about what's going on with the building itself, you know, I have no problem with that. You know, the building needs to be utilized, and people need jobs and things like that. But as far as the outdoor grow part of it goes, we do have some concerns about that. And what time was the second item?
I do believe it is item seven?
I believe that's item four. I could be wrong. And I believe that Victor did say it was hard to hear, but I think he had said that there was a grow removed. It was a mistake. So you might have been correct in that. It was hard to hear him, but I did hear him say that there was a proposed grow, and it was removed.
It was removed.
Yeah, so at some point in time, there must have been a mistake there. But it seems to be today, nope, there will be no grow. It is just for that facility.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, there is no one else here in chambers that wishes to speak on behalf of agenda item number one. So if there's anyone in the Zoom room, we can look into that.
Okay. Thank you. Jake, do we have anybody in the Zoom room?
Currently, we have no hands raised in the Zoom room. If you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand. So computer participants, raise your hand by clicking on Raise Hand at the bottom of the Zoom window. Or phone participants can raise their hand by dialing star nine.
Okay, if we have no hands in the Zoom room, we will close public comments and bring it back to the Commission.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
There is a hand raised in chambers. If you could approach the podium, first and last name, please.
Joe Perdue. Again, I live at 4426 George Road. You said there was no outdoor grow proposed, but for the last several months, there have been huge greenhouses at the back of the property. And the traffic on the gravel road, which is adjacent to my two acres, has increased dramatically.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but I do believe that that is in regards to agenda item number four. This is strictly just the Workright facility.
Are they not the same company doing both of these?
There are two separate agenda items, and item four is the item you're referencing now.
Okay.
And it's very... I mean, literally, the parcels are really close to each other. So item number one is strictly the Workright Building.
We do welcome your comments on number four.
Absolutely. And when we get to item number four, I feel like it will... A little light will go off, and it'll kind of all make sense as far as the dirt roads and the access that you're referring to.
Okay. Again, when was item number four going to come up?
After two and three.
You're going to go consecutive?
Correct.
Okay. I understand.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Sir, item number four is scheduled for 9:20, but it will go past.
Thank you, John.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay, public comment is closed. We will bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Price, I had the opportunity of visiting the site a while back, and I too am a Lakeport resident. I've been here for a very long time. I am very excited to see life being brought into what ideally looks like a great facility for manufacturing and processing. Awesome location. I'm very excited for this project.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I second those comments, and it's important that the cannabis that is produced in this county can also be processed in this county. And I think that's a component that has been missing. And based on everything I've learned and read about this and heard today, it sounds like the Workright Project is filling that need. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I would like to, you know, say that this is a great way to start off the day. I've heard great comments from neighbors, especially bordering three sides. I haven't heard anything negative. And so from what I've heard, this sounds like something that I can support. And again, it's really good to see this today. So thank you.
Okay, does anybody want to take some action or entertain a motion?
If Commissioner Chavez does not want to say anything, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Go ahead with my motion.
Yes.
Okay. I move that the Planning Commission find that the categorical exemption CE21-06 applied for by Workright Building LLC, property located at 4615 Workright Circle, Lakeport, California, further described as APN 008-032-51, will not have a significant effect on the environment, and therefore, a categorical exemption shall be approved within the findings listed in the staff report dated April 12, 2021.
I second.
Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
I move that the Planning Commission find that the major use permit UP19-47 applied for by Workright Building LLC, property located at 4615 Workright Circle, Lakeport, California, further described as APN 008-32-51, does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 and Article 27, Section AAA, AU, AV, and AX of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and the major use permit be granted subject to the conditions with the findings listed in the staff report dated April 12, 2021.
I second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
And could you like to note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the Planning Commission, appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fees must be submitted prior to 5:00 p.m. or before the seven calendar day following the Commission's final determination. Okay, we're going to go to our 910 item. The public hearing, major use permit, 19-46. Applicant owner Stuart Spivak, proposed project applicant is applying for a total of 28,012 square feet of canopy area within a total of 28,252 square feet of cultivation area and facilities, including two 120-square-foot accessory structures and water tanks, location 1027 Water Throw Road, Kalos, California, APNs 628-100-10, environmental evaluation, mitigating declaration, IS 19-65.
Good morning. Thank you very much. Scott DeLeon, Community Development Director. We've received a fairly significant amount of comment regarding this project as late as yesterday afternoon. Unfortunately, we were not able to put together a comprehensive response to all of the items we received. And as a result, we're recommending that the item be continued to the next available meeting and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Do we have any questions from the Commissioners?
No questions, Mr. Chair. And we understand how eager the applicants are to have their case heard before the Commission, but I think it's partly a function of the COVID era and the emergence of e-commerce and receiving things at the 11th hour and just having the time to properly process them, which is our obligation to the public. So under the circumstances, I do support a continuance.
Thank you, John.
I would like to second that. And again, if that was a motion, I would like to continue that.
Hi, I just wondered if you guys could hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I am having a little bit of technical issues. So can you guys give me like a couple of minutes?
I'm not quite sure what you just asked.
I don't believe there's a formal motion has been made yet.
No.
Yes, so do we want to? Would you like to entertain a motion?
So it is possible to do... Is it possible to do public comment today or do we simply wait until the continued item is on the calendar for May 13?
Your Commission could open public comment today. However, they'll be commenting on a report that is not the same report that will be presented to you on the continued date.
Thank you, Nicole. In that event, I do move that we continue Agenda Item 2 until the next Planning Commission hearing, which is May 13.
I'll second.
Okay, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
So we'll take up our 9:15 a.m. item. Major use permit UP20-03. Applicant Freddie Alvarez, owner Alvarez Ignacio Trustee. Proposed project application is applying for 1,031,000 square feet of outdoor canopy area, 500 square feet indoor canopy with a 600 square feet metal building. Will take place over four site locations, totaling up to 3.6 acres of cultivation area within the property, location 12990 Spruce Grove Road, Lake, California, APN 012-067-40, environmental evaluation, mitigating declaration, IS 20-33.
Hold on. I'm so sorry. I'm pulling it up right now. Good morning, planning Commissioners. I am going to go over Elvis Family Farms Cannabis Cultivation Project. And I am...
I apologize, you... Is there any way that you could possibly use the microphone that Victor used earlier? I appreciate that. Thank you.
Could you just hear me now?
That's a little bit better. Thank you.
Okay. Got it. Let's see. I'm going to enter the screen. So we're going to go over project description, project setting, project analysis, environmental review, findings, and recommendations. So... For project description, the... Let's see. I'm sorry. Okay. That... Could you guys see the screen?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can.
So the applicant is requesting an approval for a total of 131,500 square feet of total canopy area to be located among four site locations with a total up to 3.6 acres of cultivation area. The 30 acres will take place outdoors on raised beds without the use of any artificial lights and 500 square feet of indoor canopy within an existing structure. The structure will need to come into compliance with building codes for commercial use and will be included in the conditions of approval prior to operation. Each of the site locations will take place within areas previously discussed, such as an existing garden, a tree enclosure, and an existing... ...ad structure. And you can see in the attachment 3, site plans also provide the details of the limits and location of the proposed project proposal. In this slide, you can see the proposed and existing conditions. The project setting... The project setting is within the zoning designation, rural land. The surrounding area is primarily rural lands and a rural residential zoning designation. The zone... Oh, no, this surrounding parcel range is from approximately 17 acres... The zone, I mean, this surrounding parcel ranges from approximately 17 acres to 472 acres in size. The parcel is currently being accessed through an easement from an adjacent parcel off of Spruce Grove Road. Most of the surrounding areas are mostly vacant and some rural residence. The nearest off-site residence is approximately 1,000 feet. And we're gonna go over some site visit photos. So a site visit was conducted on March 6, 2020, and was accompanied by code enforcement for 4290 compliance and Middletown Tribe representative. Another site visit was conducted April 7, 2020 for compliance. These are existing, well, this is from the recent photos. The project consists of utilizing existing garden and in the photo, social area and one of the existing garden of proposed canopy area. The entry of the cultivation area includes a gate and in the photo, it is shown security set. One of the improvements is a fire suppressant for emergency personnel. Staff reviewed the project for concurrence with the following risks, but didn't determine that it is consistent with the Lake County general plan, lower lake area plan, and zoning ordinance. So for, the applicant is proposing commercial cannabis cultivation, which applies to ag and crop production with Lake County general plan for rural land. The applicant is proposing a type 3 outdoor cannabis cultivation per 20 acre minimum lot size and one A-type 1C indoor, which allows up to 131,180 square feet canopy area. The operation will consist of planting, growing, harvesting, drying, curing, grading, trimming, and/or combination of these activities, which includes processing. The proposed site are taking place in existing garden and livestock enclosure. The proposed project conforms with the general plan for land use ag production. The project conforms with the lower lake area plans when it comes to protecting natural resource and reading the general plan. The operation will not only infer economic growth for the county, but will also comply with the initiative in the area plan for water conservation, such as requiring to install a water meter to monitor water usage, provide an estimated water health rating, and a setback from all water resources that is known to be sensitive habitat with a 100 feet buffer. Encourage all applicants to conduct a biological resource, which was completed in October 2019. The biological report found no evidence of sensitive species within the project area. There is an existing pond that might harbor some sensitive species. However, the project process does not have any restriction to the use of the pond. The type, were contacted during the initial review period of the proposed project on January 22nd, 2020, and a site visit was requested and conducted on March 6, 2020. The tribe representative concluded they were satisfied with their site visit and no further acting is necessary. There is no proposal for native tree removal or vegetation plant. The cultivation of commercial cannabis is permitted within rural land zoning district upon issuance of the use permit according to Section 27.13, to will be of Lake County zoning ordinance. Three A-type 3 outdoor license allow up to 131,000 square feet of canopy per license and requires 20 acre, for each acre of canopy. A type 1C indoor license allow up to 500 square feet of canopy area per five acre minimum lot size. The applicant meets the requirement with 65.808 acres of the total area of the parcel. The initial study found that the project can cause potential significant impact that can be found in attachment 6 and will include aesthetics such as additional light sources for structure and security. The applicant will provide an outdoor lighting plan and blackout film material plan to the community development department for review and approval for the proposed structure. Security lights will be mitigated to be sealed, to not exceed to other parcels. Air quality addresses impact from the pungent odor of the plant and best feed fugitive that will be mitigated through passive means through buffer zone and active mean through odor control plan. The pond was, has a potential to harbor sensitive species. However, the applicant will not use the pond as a water source. The applicant did propose a well as the plumbing resource. The project meet all of the major use permit findings. The proposed use of commercial cannabis cultivation operation is permitted in rural land zoning designation upon issuance of the minor use permit according to Article 27 of Lake County zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance provides specific details to incorporate measures that will alleviate potential detenence to the general affair of the communities such as buffer zone, installing security, road maintenance, and installing a water meter. The general requirement also includes providing specific plans such as security plan, erosion and sediment plan, prevention plan, stormwater plan, water management plans, and other plans to ensure that the proposed use will address various factors that will impact the environment. Additionally, the community development department will conduct an annual compliance monitoring inspection during the cultivation season to ensure compliance with the project management plan and conditions of approval. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission takes the following as in to adopt a mitigating negative declaration, IS 2008, for major use permit, and UP 2003, with the following findings found in attachment 6. Staff also recommends the approval of minor use permit, UP 2003, for the following findings of the previous slide. Yes, I think that is the end of this slide. Is there any question? Or do they really want to say?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I don't have any questions for Ham Satur. However, I do have a couple of questions for the applicant when we get to that point in the process.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff?
Not at this time, from me.
Was, I do have one question. Was this early activated last year?
Yes, for August.
It was. Thank you.
We have no further questions. Is the applicant available to answer questions?
Mr. Chair, I don't see, I don't believe the applicant is in chambers. He might be on Zoom.
I'm happy to just put the questions out there depending on the applicant's availability.
I see we do have a hand raised. I don't know if this is the applicant. Jake, could you?
I, so the applicant did alert me that they are here. I have joints. They are unmuted. And it looks like they are able to talk. Joint, if you're trying to speak, we cannot hear you.
How's it going?
Oh, great. Fantastic. We hear you now.
Perfect, perfect. Hello, my fellow Lake County residents.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I do have a couple of questions for you, but I don't mean to preempt any comments you would like to make to the commission first, sir.
I'm super thankful to be here. I've been in Lake County for almost 20-plus years. I'm thankful that we're at the stage. Um, speech shifts right now?
Speaker, if you could introduce yourself.
This is a dream. I'm super thankful that the community has come forward to allow us to continue forward with cannabis.
Mr. Alvarez, if I may?
Yes.
Can you please state your first and last name and then continue?
My name is Freddie Alvarez.
Thank you.
So yeah, I'm super thankful that we're, we're at the stage for our family. I'm a big supporter of cannabis, I'm a big supporter of Lake County. I see that the community, cannabis is gonna thrive in Lake County with the wages, the build-outs, the staffing, the neighbor communication, communication with the, the plan department. I've made a lot of contacts with the supervisors, and it's a, it's a good thing that we're moving forward with the cannabis industry. And I'm here to answer any questions you have. Let's say, I, I own and operate a cannabis dispensary in Santa Rosa, located right next the family court. I'm really involved with the community. My brother is a board member of supervisors or a city council. We've been in Santa Rosa my whole life. So I'm super thankful for Lake County. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer any of them. Sorry about my, I'm just kind of excited.
It's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have, this is Commissioner Hess. I do have a couple of questions for you. One, it's not quite clear to me the number of employees you're expecting year round or during the peak season. There was one reference in the agency comments to a truck and a few employees, and normally, we like to have a little more clarity than that so we can understand road trips and that kind of thing.
Perfect. So I've been at this property for about 16 to 17 years of, I've been infatuated with the cannabis plant since third grade, and I've been at that property building since then. So at the state where I'm at now, I'm pretty much, the farm is pretty much complete at this APN. I'm just doing the final little things. But so my staff is smaller due that I'm always on site and I have machinery and I work really hard. Wake up at 5, go to sleep at 10.
So you, you can't give us a sense of how many?
Oh, yeah. I have four, I have four members, staff members.
And do you, do you anticipate that number increasing during the peak season?
If, yeah. Not too much. I've been doing this for a really long time. I've done the tricks and ends. Most people over hire. I'd like to expand my employees once I get my license, and I'd like to, like, for if, most people that know us, I pay my employees the highest wages in cannabis. I see that there's other cannabis aid companies that are not for the employee. I work with the labor board with the Teamsters in Sonoma County, and that's where, where I will be hiring for the Teamsters of Union for Cannabis. I am the first cannabis dispensary to go, to try to unionize. That's where I plan on getting my employees. So yeah, I do plan on expanding.
Thank you for that. Just one other question, and it involves access. You have no public access and make use of an easement. And in our public comments, we received a letter from an attorney, William Painter, representing Maureen and Servando Garcia, and they have serious concerns about the use of that easement if the purpose is commercial. And I'm wondering if you've had any contact with them or had tempted to come to some kind of understanding.
Good thing you asked. So our first transaction was a communication of an easement. We provided all the documents that do have an easement. Our second transaction was, would you like to sell your property? Third transaction was yes. Waiting for the fourth transaction. I'd paid 875,000 for the property, but she said yes. I'm waiting for her to sign the agreement, and then I'll be owning that property, and I will be applying for a license for that parcel as well.
Thank you.
And I invite everybody at the councilman, come check out our property. See, photo says a thousand words. You should come out and check it out.
One reason I raise that question is because some photographs were attached from the Garcia letter, and I haven't been to the property, so I can't determine where on the road that occurred or whatever, but they seemed to have some photographic evidence that they were unhappy with the nature of the road use.
Let's say if I could go back by like 15 years, Mr. Servanto and my father have had in-person communication, and they did an easement, and then we upgraded, and we have the easement rights, and then it even said we're able to upgrade it, and due to safety and no one maintaining the road, the road was kind of falling apart. So on the easement rights, it says we have authorization to fix the road. Mr. Servanto was advised, and he said that was fine. By the time I was already doing the improvements, he came to complain. And then me and him and the lawyer sat down together, and then we came to an agreement that he's been selling his property, and he seems like he was happy because he's getting a little bit more, and then we're happy as well. That's where we're at. We're just waiting for Mr. Servanto to sign the contract.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No more questions.
I have a question. It's been posed to me this week. So this was early activation. Did you grow with a state license?
I did not cultivate this year. I'm still waiting. Pretty much I have no plants on my property. I'm waiting for my license from Cal Cannabis. Never had contact with them as well.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no further questions, let's open it up for a public comment. Do we have anybody in the chambers wishing to speak on this item?
Mr. Chair, I do not see a show of hands for anyone wishing to speak on this item.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any hands in the Zoom room?
Yes, we do have some hands raised in the Zoom room. The first hand I have raised here is from William H. Painter. Painter, hope that's right. William, I have sent you permission to speak. I am asking you to unmute.
Thank you very much. My name's William Painter. I'm an attorney in Sonoma, and I want to particularly thank the planning commissioners having set for eight years in the Planning Commission in Sonoma Valley. I know it's a, it's a hard work and a challenge. I represent the parties that are, that are the owners of the property that the easement traverses, Maureen and Salvador Garcia, and they have not, they have no plans at this time to sell the property to the applicant, and they objected and a cease and desist correspondence was sent to the applicant last year in August, and they basically ignored the cease and desist request. They've tried to not incur the expansive litigation in relationship to this property, but they feel that their property has been, I don't want to use the word abuse, but certainly not for the intention in which the original easement was, was created. It makes no provision for commercial usage, no provision for expanding its size, or, or the bypass that was created. And so what's happened is they had the, the property changed materially from a small country lane road that was to be used for ingress and egress purposes for non-commercial purposes, and obviously, this is for commercial purposes. So when we, we objected the approval, and, and I've had a chance to read the staff report, which is comprehensive and, and understandable if you don't take into consideration the issue regarding the easement. However, under the major use permit findings of approval on page 12, it specifically addresses the issues of commercial standards for the access roadway. That's not provided for in the easement. It talks about the, whether or not the site has adequate size, shape, location, and physical characteristics. It does not when you take into consideration the restrictions of the easement, and it's certainly detrimental to my client if they have basically a commercial highway running through their property, which they did not approve of. The improvements or the changes to the easement were conducted without any communication of my client, and specifically, the easement provides that my client, the grantor, has control of access to the, to the gate on Spruce Grove Road. So we're looking at a situation we're looking at a situation where we don't think that the, um, approval for this, uh, use permit, UP twenty dash zero three is supported by findings because the characteristics of the roadway, if necessary in court to enforce it, will not adequately provide for commercial usage and, and transportation through this, through their property. And they haven't indicated to me that there's-
I'm sorry, William. I'm sorry. Um, we have expired the three-minute timeline.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the Zoom room with a hand up?
Yes, we have a hand up from phone six two oh five. Phone, phone six two oh five, I've sent you permission to speak. You should be able to unmute by dialing star six, I believe.
Good morning. Uh, I've been trying to let you guys know that, um, the, uh, I'm on Zoom by phone and, uh, I have not been able to make out what is being presented from nine forty-nine to, uh, nine fifty-nine.
I'm sorry, could you say your first and last name, please?
Yes, Bart Levinson. Yep.
You can continue to speak.
Well, just that, none of what was presented could be heard. Uh, it, I just heard a few words in passing and it sounded concerning. But couldn't be made out.
Okay, and from what you gathered from, uh, from what you did here, do you have any questions?
Well, yes, but I don't think I got the information of what was said. I heard things like lights will be mitigated, sensitive species, does not meet major use permit. Um, those are just little ins and outs moments that I did catch that sounded concerning.
Ma'am, if you could hold off for a moment, this is Commissioner Hess. Um, question for counsel, uh, when there is a technical glitch, and I consider this a technical issue, not, uh, an intentional issue. Any advice for us in terms of how audible some, a portion might be or not?
Uh, you can certainly, I, I don't recall what part of the presentation was during nine forty-nine to nine fifty-nine.
I think it might even have been the item we just approved, in fact.
Right. Um, the, uh, items themselves have been posted. They've been noticed. The information is available on the website. It was available, um, from, from community development. It was discussed during the agenda, uh, discussion and comment period. So if your commission, well, if it were this item now, your commission could ask that staff revisit parts of the, of the presentation if you choose. Um, it's a little bit trickier if it's the item before this one where you've already voted.
Thank you for that. I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward. Ma'am, it's, we apologize for the technical difficulties. That is an item that the commission has already acted on, however, and I would personally not support reopening that. The timeframe you gave suggests it was when we were still considering the end of the first issue, the, the item we just approved. I don't want to split hairs, but I'm just, I'm just trying to say that-
Are they taking notes and writing times down?
Ma'am, I apologize if you've had a problem hearing some of our hearing, but I, as a commissioner, am not prepared to roll back the clock. It's not an intentional audio, audio difficulty that's being created and we're doing our best under the COVID climate.
Thank you. We are US the public.
I'm prepared to proceed as a commissioner.
Oh, real quick, if I could comment on that, on that, on the subject. Uh, we do have, uh, multiple streams available. Uh, if someone is having technical difficulties with Zoom, um, I know the previous speaker was using a phone. Generally that path, um, is a little clearer, isn't as subject to technical difficulties. But I mean, as we've all had phone calls that have been interrupted, uh, phones are not impervious to that. Uh, so we do have, uh, streams available on Granica's Facebook and YouTube, uh, and I would suggest checking the, um, the, checking those feeds, uh, if issues, um, continue, uh, and the, the full meeting will be available, probably tomorrow sometime, um, once it's, uh, finished. So that information can be checked again.
Okay, can we proceed to the next hand, please?
Uh, so the next hand we have raised is from Nicole Williams. Uh, however, I do not see a audio device for Nicole Williams. Uh, so Nicole, if you've called in on a phone, uh, actually the next three speakers all don't have, um, audio devices connected to their Zoom sessions. Uh, so if you have called in on a phone, uh, you would need to link that audio to your Zoom. Uh, Nicole. Let's see, I'm gonna try this. I have, uh, two phones in the Zoom room right now. I've sent permissions to speak on both of them. Um, Nicole, if you are one of those phones, will you unmute? You should be able to dial star six. Okay, well, I will, uh, um, I'll have to work with these three to get them connected. The audio is there. Do we want to try public comments in the chambers for a moment?
I don't believe we have anybody in the chambers. Is that still correct?
Um, yes, Mr. Chair, there's no one here that wishes to speak on this item.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if we're unable to, um, connect the callers, I'm going to close public comment.
Oh wait, hold on one second here. Okay, Nicole, I think I've sent you permission to speak.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, sorry about that. I was having trouble, difficulties my end.
Hi, good morning, commissioners. My name is Nicole Williams and I want to thank you for your time and energy today. I'm here to show my support and speak, uh, for Alvarez Farms. Um, I have known the Alvarez family for a long time and the Alvarez Farm is a longstanding, family-owned and operated facility. The Alvarez family has deep roots in Lake County, in the Lake County community, and they strive to raise the operating standards for cannabis cultivation. With the highest paid wages, Alvarez Farms is deeply aligned with labor and they strive to provide livable wages and local employment to the Lake County community. In my 20 years of experience in cannabis, Alvarez Farms has one of the cleanest operations that I have visited to date and have a strong desire to align themselves with labor to help build up the integrity of cannabis cultivation in Lake County. For these reasons, I'm here to show my support for this item. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have another hand, Jake?
Uh, yes, we have another hand up from, um, uh, Maureen here. Uh, Maureen, I've given you permission to unmute. I have now sent you a request to unmute. It looks like you're muted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Yeah, this is Maureen Flynn Garcia. Um, thank you for your time. And I just wanted to clarify, I mean, I thank my lawyer for being there. Um, this has been pretty upsetting. We were taken by surprise. Um, we bought this property, um, probably about 17 years ago and they bought their property after us and presented it as a vacation home. And so the easement, as recorded at that time, um, in Lake County, still stands. We bought the property with the easement and we have not been in any discussions to change the easement. I just want to clarify that with the Alvarez's, um, we have not sat down with them about selling the property. Um, so, um, this has been, this will really change the whole spirit. Um, we bought this as a vacation property and they presented it as such also. And the, this easement road goes right through the middle of our property and, um, has severely, um, kind of changed the nature. So I really oppose this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Do we have any additional hands, Jake?
Right, I think we have one more hand here, um, from Leanne Nakashima. I've sent you an unmute request. Looks like you're unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Hi, I'm Leanne Nakashima. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Thank you, commissioners, for hearing this project today. I am in support of Alvarez project. I am currently a Sonoma County resident, but I'm going to be relocating to Lake County this summer. I have been in the industry for 18 years and I've been on many cultivation sites, watching them transition from the old ways into this legal market with licenses and regulations. And I, I haven't seen a cleaner facility in the four counties that I have visited. And what most is most impressive to me is how fire they re, ready they are. In Sonoma County, our, our cultivation sites are struggling because of their inability to get ready for the fire season. The Alvarez Farms is working with the fire department in Lake County and they are more ready than I have seen any other facility and I'm really proud to say that. And while the, I, I believe the Alvarez Farms is in support of employees, they're going to be working with labor. They're striving to provide the highest wages in Lake County. They do in Sonoma County currently. And employ, and, and it actually has made in the wages for the dispensaries in Sonoma County, everyone has had to increase their wages because of the dispensary that the Alvarez's own in Sonoma County. They do desire to have growth and that's only going to bring more employment to Lake County. They want to hire Lake County residents and they want to bring cannabis and hemp tourism to Lake County. I don't know if you guys have been watching, but I've been watching closely what's happening throughout the state of California. And cannabis and hemp tourism is huge. And I hope that the commissioners and the board of supervisors welcomes cannabis and hemp tourism. And I believe that Alvarez Farms will show Lake County how to lead in that. They were in Forbes magazine years ago for bringing in cannabis tourism and I'm excited to see what they can do for Lake County and this will only bring more revenue because they're gonna eat at restaurants, they're gonna shop in stores and they're gonna visit Lake County wineries. Thank you for your time today, commissioners. I hope that you vote in favor for this project.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, do we have any other hands, Jake?
All right, the last hand I have raised up here is, uh, from Joint, who was the applicant. So I just wanted to, uh, check in with them one more time and make sure they didn't have any additional comment.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
How's it going? Uh, so we have comments from my neighbors and their lawyers and or forth. Um, I do, like 100% have, uh, their concern is in my number one thing. It's kind of, I can't say too much, but we've had emails through real estate agents, communication. I can't say more than that's kind of a personal thing, but yeah, we've had communication and there's emails for that. So I appreciate everyone that's made comments. Maureen, we should get together. I've never met you. I've been there every day in my life and I've never met you. So whenever you have that day, we should sit down and have dinner. So thank you, uh, chambers. Thank you, Lake County. Thank you for everybody else spoke. Uh, I can't hear you guys.
Well, go ahead. Do we have any other questions for the applicant before we?
Uh, sure, I have a question. Um, so in regards, uh, with that easement, what, um, how do we see this issue, uh, being resolved? Because it seems, uh, I mean, from the statement by, uh, Ms. Garcia, uh, that it splits their property. Um, I mean, I have, I haven't seen it. So I, I mean, I haven't been on, there on the ground to see, um, what it looks like, but my concern is, you know, is to make sure that this issue gets figured out, um, so it works best for both parties. Um, so my question is, again, um, how is this issue potentially going to be resolved, uh, in regards to the easement splitting the neighboring property?
Mr. Chair?
Real, real quickly, go ahead, Commissioner Hess.
Yeah, if I could comment on my colleague's comment. The, the, uh, Garcias have several remedies, including appeal and, um, further legal action, which is a personal decision. I, I personally have no problem with the underlying application and the four corners of the operation, so to speak. And I see a way clear to, um, acting on the application. We are in no position to order the applicant and the concerned party to come to an agreement. That supersedes our role. But I just would like to note that the, um, opponents of the application do have other remedies at their disposal as well.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Chair, this is Nicole.
Commissioner Hess, I, I would like to quit, quit counsel.
Yes, uh, just real quick, Commissioner Hess is correct that the county does not enforce easements. However, it is also correct that if the existence of an easement and the function of an easement as it's, as it's provided to you as in evidence, as commissioners, does not allow you to determine that you could make a specific finding that's presented to you, then you can certainly use that evidence to weigh towards a yes or a no in improving the project. So if you found, as was mentioned during comments, that one or more of the findings can no longer be met because the easement exists and it doesn't allow for certain uses, then you can certainly say so and either vote for or against the project based on that information. But we cannot enforce an easement. You're correct.
Thank you. Thank you. Also, I, I want to, um, I can officially close public comments. We'll close public comment. And if there's any other, um, comments from the commissioners, please go ahead and, and speak on those comments. Uh, no further comments?
I have no comment.
No comment.
Okay, thank you. We want to take some action.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Appreciate the comments regarding the easement and the associated issues and council's clarification. I, I am still prepared to go forward with the motion and move that the planning commission find that the major use permit, UP two oh dash oh three, applied for by Alvarez Family Farm, Inc., Freddie Alvarez, on property located at one two nine nine zero Spruce Grove Road, Lower Lake, California. Further described as APNs oh one two, oh one two dash oh six seven dash four oh will not have a significant effect on the environment and therefore a mitigated negative declaration shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated April 22nd, 2021.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Get a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
Mr. Chair, I move further that the Planning Commission find that the major use permit UP 20-03, applied for by Alvarez Family Farm, Inc., Freddie Alvarez, on property located at 12990 Spruce Grove Road, Lower Lake, California. Further described as APN 012-067-40, does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 and Article 27, Section 1ATIII at the Lake County zoning ordinance and the major use permit be granted subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report dated April 22nd, 2021.
A second?
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hess?
Aye.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
Like to note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the Planning Commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. Your appropriate forms and applicable fees must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM or before the seventh calendar day on the Commission's final determination. Okay, we'll take up our 9:28, 9:20 AM item, Public Care and Consider Made Use Permit, UP 20-28. The applicant, Restuson Farms LLC, Joseph Restuson, owner Walter Stryker. Proposed project applicant is applying for a total of 111,620 square feet of canopy, 89,620 square, square feet of outdoor and 22,000 square feet of mixed light area within a total of 237,220 square feet of cultivation area and facilities, including 50,000 square feet processing facility, 24,000 square feet of greenhouse for nursery, 50,000 square feet for drying facility, three storage sheds and 22,000 square feet of greenhouse structures for mixed light canopy. Location 4440, 4460, 4520, 4550, George Road, Lakeport, California. APN 008-031-48, and 008-032-44. Environmental evaluation mitigated negative declaration IS 20-33.
Good morning. So I have another PowerPoint that I prepared. Carrie Anne, will you please pull it up?
Can you hear?
Let me bring that up right now. Give me one sec. Okay, can everyone see the screen? Hello?
Yes, we can. We can see it. Just make sure you just start the slideshow.
Oh. Left corner. And expand it.
You could click on, like on the very top bar, if you click on 1, 2, 3, 4, that was the six. That looks like a, like a little projector with a circle in it. Like the very top. Yeah.
There you go. Okay, so.
Yeah.
You can go to the next slide. Okay, so we're going to go over similar procedure. Project description, project setting, project analysis, environmental review, findings and recommendation. So you can go ahead and go to the other slide. So the project description, the applicant is applying for an approval for a total of 111,620 square feet of mature cannabis canopy area and up to 22,000 square feet of immature plants for nursery within a 237,220 square feet cultivation area. That is 89,620 square feet outdoor totaling or area and 22,000 square feet mixed light canopy area within greenhouses, totaling it up to 111,620 square feet of mature cannabis canopy. The project also consists of up to 22,000 square feet of nursery used for cloning, propagation, for selling and distribution. This will also include the following structures. A 50,000 square feet processing facility, a 50,000 square feet drying facility, a 24,000 total square feet of greenhouse for mixed light fitted with air filtration system, a 24,000 total square feet greenhouse for nursery. The project will include security portable restroom till a permanent restroom established within the processing facility. There is an existing vineyard on the property and the applicant is utilizing an existing underground water line from the well to the storage tank. Oh. Okay. The project setting, the, the project setting is within a zoning designation agriculture, waterway, airport approach combining district. The surrounding area of the project boundary consists of agriculture and ag preserve zone. The sizes of the parcels vary from just approximately 0.6 acres to 50 acres. There are some residential dwellings to the north and south portion of the parcel boundary with a nearby offsite residence being approximately 500 feet away. To the east of the parcel boundary is an airstrip and a proposed commercial cannabis manufacturing plant, which was item one. The overall zoning composition of the project location and the surrounding areas is our agriculture use for walnut and grape vineyard. The project is located within the farmland protection zone. However, the project was deemed complete prior to December 15th, 2020 and was issued early activation that year. So in the picture, if you go click another one, there's, I, I did receive a comment about being isolated or not. So I wanted to show this because if you notice the parcel boundary, it is divided by the airstrip. To the east, you'll see a whole bunch of unique farmland, local, farmland of local importance. To the, to the west, there's grazing land and other lands. So I, I, that's how I determine if it's isolated enough. So it's in the outskirts. So can you go to the next slide? So then the following pictures are going to be site pictures. A site visit was conducted on April 24th, 2020 and was accompanied by code enforcement for 4290 compliance. And again, April 7th, 2020, 21, I'm sorry, April 7th, 2021, due to some public complaints. There were some complaints about greenhouses. So these are current photos. I do have previous ones, too. So the, this is looking east toward the cultivation site. The proposed location was used to cultivate hemp two years ago and is located near a workright building and airport, as you can see in the photo. Oh wait, you're, you're going a little too fast. There is an existing well and it's located north, yeah, there's no well. Okay, in the northern part of. This is looking, that's west of the cultivation site where you can see steep slope. The proposed site is primarily located designated as grazing land. However, it is within the, yeah, farmland protection zone. Next slide. Okay. Staff reviewed the project for concurrence with the following listed and determined that it is consistent with the Lake County general plan, Lakeport area plan and zoning ordinance. Next slide. The applicant is proposing to engage in the growing commercial cannabis cultivation, which applies to agriculture within the Lake County general plan for ag. As an effort to support and protect the county's valuable ag resource, the applicant supports the new ordinance set by the Board of Supervisor dated December 15th, 2020 and will comply by shifting to outdoor canopy area to an enclosure with air filtration system required by the Lake County within the three years. The Sunset Clause adopted in ordinance 3101 would apply to this. However, the applicant meets the general plan's conformance for the law will use under the current designation and meets the zoning ordinance due to grandfather clause. So by definition in our zoning ordinance, outdoors can have enclosed structure without artificial light. Uh, next, uh, next slide. Okay, the project conforms with the Lake, Lakeport area plan when it comes to ag. The operation will not only encourage economic growth for the county, but will also comply with the initiative to, in the area plan listed in the slide through the list of water usage. An existing agriculture well will be utilized and has an existing meter, as shown in one of the site visit photos. As part of the requirement, the applicant must submit a water availability analysis and estimated water calculation. The existing ag well has the capability to produce approximately 184 gallons per minute. The water use is projected to be approximately 234,000 gallons per month for the proposed mature canopy area. Data will be recorded and must be submitted during the annual inspection. In addition, the project site is located in grazing and unique farmland. Cannabis cultivation provide a viable economic opportunity for ag agriculture industry. Lastly, George Road is a county maintained road. However, the applicant will adhere to the fire safety guideline adopted by CalFire to meet driveway access standard. Next slide. The proposed project conforms with all zoning ordinance designation for ag agriculture, waterway, airport approach combining district. Under Article 27.17 AT, commercial cannabis cultivation is allowable upon obtaining a use permit under zoning designation for agriculture. The applicant meets all development standards under Article 5 with further restriction under Article 27.13 AT regarding minimum setback requirements. The applicant meets Article 37 under Waterway Combining District to preserve, protect waterway within the property boundary with the required setbacks of 50 feet and further limiting the setback to under 100 feet with Article 27 from all water course. The project is located 100 feet from all water courses. However, an existing vineyard is situated on a water course as shown in the previous map. The proposed project is approximately 800 feet from the ag agriculture pond that developed into a source of habitat for potential sensitive species. The pond will not be used as a source of irrigation. Next slide. The initial study found that the project could cause potential significant impact that can be found in attachment six and will include aesthetics such as additional light source for structures and security. The applicant will provide a outdoor lighting plan and blackout film material plan to the community development department for review and approval for the proposed structures. Security lights will be mitigated to be sure to not exceed to other parcels. Air quality addresses impact from the pungent odor of the plant and thus fugitive that will be mitigated through passive means, through buffer zones and active mean through an odor control plan. Air filtration is required for all structure under the conditions of approval. According to the biological assessment report conducted in March 9th, 2020, there is no special status species detected during the site visit and research conducted on the parcel. However, the potential impact is due to the presence of water course on site. Next slide. The project meets all of the major use permit findings through the zoning ordinance requirement for all setbacks, requirements and exclusionary area. The project parcel adequately accommodate to the project site. The circulation system will not cause additional impacts, however, will be improved in accordance to the condition of approval. The ordinance general requirement per Section 27.13 AT also includes providing specific plans such as security plan, erosion and sediment provision plans, stormwater plan, water management plan and other plans to ensure that the proposed use would address and minimize various factors that will potentially impact the neighboring areas. The amended ordinance will be incorporated within the project scope to further alleviate potential impact that meets the above statement of this section. The community development department will conduct an annual compliance monitoring inspection during the cultivation season to ensure compliance with the approved project management plan and conditions of approval. Additional findings listed can be found in the staff report. Next slide. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission takes the following action to adopt a mitigated negative declaration IS 2033 for a major use permit for UP 2028 with the following findings found in attachment six. Staff also recommend the approval of major use permit UP 2028 for the following findings of the previous slide and detailed in the staff report. Next slide. And that's it. Yeah. Do I have any questions?
Could you just confirm the date of early activation again for me, please? I wrote down December 15th, 2020.
I think that was when it was deemed complete. It was deemed complete prior to that date. It's my understanding.
There's a reason I asked. It's not a trick question.
I know.
It looks like, I, I believe I wrote down 4/24/2020. But that might have been just your site visit that you were out there.
It, they were my site visit. It was.
I have it, my end is 5/27.
Okay. Oh.
Mr. Chair, this is Nicole Johnson.
Yes.
There was something else I wanted to.
Did you want to go for, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, there, okay. So there was one more thing. We, we will also include one more condition of approval that wasn't on the, the, the attachment. So I'm going to quote this. We're going to add the, another addition or in addition to the condition of approval. So it will state that this permit shall have no force or effect until the effective date of ordinance number 3101, date of May 2021, at which point this permit shall be fully effective. Should ordinance number 3101 not become effective on May 20th, 2021, this permit shall be void. Should permit begin any permitted work prior to the effective date of this permit, the permit shall be subjected to immediate revocation.
Mr. Chair, this is Nicole Johnson again. Just to put some clarification on that. Ordinances are not effective until 30 days after their second reading and adoption. This particular ordinance and the correct number is 3103. This particular ordinance was adopted on Tuesday of this week, so for 2021. It'll be effective 30 days from that date, May 20, 2021, which means that any permit adopted, technically speaking, today. means that any permit adopted, technically speaking, today, is the applicable ordinance is the zoning ordinance as it was before that adoption of Tuesday's ordinance. So if we are adopting permits, if we're approving permits today to which that ordinance would apply, we are adding this condition so that that permit is not effective until the ordinance that applies to it is effective. And if any action is taken under that permit between now and then, any permitted action, then the permit is void.
I was just asking about the early activation date. Let me, I don't want to, I don't want to be cryptic, but I didn't want to get ahead of the process either. There's a letter that I'm going to be referring to from CDFW dated eight twenty, referring to a site visit on July one of twenty twenty, and that's why the date of early activation is of interest to me.
I think I might've misplaced that over upstairs.
I have no other questions for staff.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I would, um, before I, I make a comment, I would, um, be open to, uh, public comment to get some feedback. And the applicant.
Is the applicant available? Do you have any questions for the applicant?
I don't believe the applicant is in chambers as of right now.
I have a hand raised in the Zoom room from Joseph Gustafson. Would that be the applicant?
Yes.
All right. Uh, Joseph, I've given you permission to speak and I've asked you to unmute.
Hello, sir. How you doing? This is Joseph Gustafson.
Fantastic. We can hear you.
Oh, I'm doing good. I, uh, am here for any questions you guys have and, uh, any questions the neighbors may have.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant? If not, we will go ahead and proceed to open public comments.
Mr. Chair, I'll hold until after public comment.
Okay, thank you.
I'll also wait till after public comment.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I may, um, I do believe there are, um, parties that wish to speak on this, um, agenda item. If you'd like to start in chambers, we could do that.
Yes, we'll open public comment and we'll start in the chambers. Thank you.
Um, just out of curiosity, show of hands, who is here to speak on this item? Thank you. I guess like six. So about six people will speak. Um, who I would like to go first, feel free to approach the podium. Be sure to state your first and last name and we will be implementing the three-minute timeframe, time limit, I should say.
I have to produce this mask because I can't breathe with the steam. Okay, I oppose the grandfather clause.
I apologize. You have to state your first and last name, please.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Steven Hage, Lake County Commissioner. I apologize.
Go ahead.
Okay. I oppose the grandfather clause being applied to this proposed outdoor, outdoor cannabis grow located at forty-four sixty George Road. It's zoned ag land. It's part of a large contiguous ag land area. They should never have gotten early activation in the area, which allowed for outdoor activation. It's within the farmland, the farmland protection zone. Prior to the farmland protection zone, it was under, it was in, under Article twenty-seven adopted by the board in two thousand and eighteen, and let's say it required indoor grow, not outdoor grow. So to be, seeing that he was caught by surprise with the farmland protection zone is not accurate. He knew about the, about, about, about the greenhouse requirements before that, when he, when he had the property in two thousand and nineteen. According to the state Cal Cannabis Annual and Provisional License listing, applicant does not have any state cannabis licenses. For a background, as of April sixteen of this year, there were seventy-six individuals or companies holding outdoor licenses in Lake County for a total of three hundred and sixty-five acres. So therefore, these are not hard to get. You just have to apply for them and then just fill out the right forms. Not holding a state license means that the set on George Road was able to harvest their, 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 uh, cannabis without being involved in the truck and trace program, which means they weren't allowed to sell their product through a legal distribution channel. Lastly, I under, reading the background, I understand the fish and wildlife and the Central Valley Water, Water, Water Board had, had, had problems with Mr. Gustafson or the, or the applicant. In two thousand and twenty, he was in the hemp program, well, he was in nineteen, which ended in twenty. He received four non-compliances from our, from our department. In one situation outside of this area, he had three registered hemp sites and we were able to test two at seven point three and eight point four. The legal limit's point three of one percent. That's cannabis. We cannabis, mind you, is still cannabis. When we went later, when we went back to test the third site, the plants were gone. Whoa. Okay, that's all.
Thank you. Thank you, Sam. Good morning. Just be sure to state your first and last name for us one more time.
Joe Purdue.
Thank you.
We got the notice about the, uh, the grow operation and what they wanted to do and how they want to put in, uh, all the buildings and the outdoor grow and all that. And, uh, they access it off of George Road on a gravel road, which goes right by my house. I have two acres and the vineyard actually borders on two sides of my two acres. And, uh, since they started building the operation back there, which they've started building, they have trucks going in and out with building materials and, and stuff constantly going back there, even vehicles going out at two and three o'clock in the morning in and out, which I have no idea what they're doing back there at two or three o'clock in the morning, but we can hear them going by. And, uh, the dust, they, they did put up some speed signs on the gravel road, which only a few of them actually adhere to. Most of the guys go down through there at twenty-five, thirty miles an hour and just leave close dust clouds behind them. George Road itself is a fairly narrow country road, which is, they call maintained by the county, which means they come out and they fill the chuck holes. And, uh, they've been filling the chuck holes for so many years now that it's basically just one long chuck hole out there and it's, it's a rough road. And, uh, the traffic that has increased just because of the construction and things that are going on back there means there's much more trash on, on the roads where people are throwing out everything from candy wrappers to beer cans to anything you want to throw out there. I know because I walk up and down that road, uh, all the time, uh, for exercise. So, uh, Mr. Gustafson, Gustafson, I guess this is how he pronounces it. It seems to me if he was wanting to put in something like that, he would've had the courtesy to come and speak to the neighbors that are going to be affected by it personally. But instead, he just sends this notice saying this is what we're going to do and basically, uh, that's it. But, uh, talking about this early activation thing, he was not allowed to, to build until after the permit has been, I didn't understand that quite because I know there's been construction going on back there. It's been going on almost constantly for the last three or four months. So I don't know what they're building, but they're hauling an awful lot of material back there and, uh, it's just, uh, there's something isn't right, something he's, he's not following the rules quite like he should. And the dust situation and the traffic up and down George Road is a concern for all the people that live on George Road, not just myself. Uh, the, the, the trash, the dust, the noise, the, the in and out at all hours of the night is, is concerning and I just wish he would, you know, talk to the people that are directly affected by that and, uh, see if we can't do something to mitigate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Bill Burnett, forty-seven fifty George Road, resident of Lake County for quite some time. Ladies and gentlemen, I can't imagine a project that's less compatible with the area that we live in out there than this. The proposed buildings, the outdoor grow, um, I don't know how many of you did a site visit out there, but there are literally hundreds of people that live around that area. You know, we're registered agriculture for sure, but it's a populated agricultural area. I think the spirit of this law says that these kind of activities should have been done out by high valley, places where you have ranches that are eight hundred acres, not right in the middle of a populated area that's been there for quite some time. Your ag commissioner just painted a kind of a picture of, of, of the individual, I guess, is processing this and it doesn't sound like he's been exactly following the rules in a lot of ways. What makes you think he's going to do it in the future after he gets going? Sent us all a letter, um, that I assume he got the addresses from the petition that we gave you. There was over about a hundred signatures on that petition. We could've got a lot more, except there were people that were afraid to sign a petition because of retaliation and I can understand that. But we got this letter and one of the things that says in odor control, which is everybody's biggest issue, right? Odor control, um, that we will ultimately build out greenhouses, well, with filtration. Well, ultimate, ultimately to me means maybe someday, okay? In the meantime, you got outdoor grows. My partner, his property is adjacent to that grow area, visited his house many times during this, um, cannabis grow, well, I'm sorry, hemp grow, is that what it was supposedly earlier? And, and the odor was overpowering. I live about a mile away from it, up on a hill, and you could smell it up there. Think about all the people that have to live and put up with that. Get to George Road. I like Joe's comment about it being one big chuckle. Sorry, Steve, you do a pretty good job keeping it going, but, uh, it's a rural road. It's a small road and the road he's talking about that accesses the property is a very, um, dirt road with, uh, no covering on it at all. He says he's only going to have fourteen people working there in this letter to us. I understand in other letters when he's talking about taxes and the impacts of, of his business, it's over two hundred. So I'm not sure which he's talking about, but if you've got a hundred people that are going to work every day, uh, in that place, can you imagine on George Road accessing that? Uh, if you've visited, you know how rural it is. So, um, I guess I'm speaking on behalf of an awful lot of people that live in that vicinity. You know, your, your report was accurate by the rules, I assume. Uh, I think there's some contradictions that my partners looked up in it, but the spirit of the law is that it is, doesn't impact people. Uh, and you'll be impacting an awful lot of people if you were to go forward.
I'm sorry, we have actually hit our three-minute timeframe. Thank you.
Good morning. Can you just speak either, uh, just a little bit? That's perfect.
My name is Brandy Parley. I live at forty-three ninety George Road. The address four four zero would, like our neighbor, it is adjacent to our property line. Over the past several months, we've noticed increased traffic, um, to the degree that we've not experienced before. All hours of the night, it doesn't matter if it's one in the afternoon, one in the morning, there's, there's traffic. The trash, I've, I've been there for twenty-one years and the trash is just horrendous. That's just part of the concern. What about, you know, um, given the drought conditions, our wells are already stressed and that is a huge concern for us. So there's, there's many things. I share my, my neighbor's concerns and I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Parley. I want to first off, thank you guys for, um, having us comment and our concerns. I'm backing up all my neighbors, but I also want to bring in the personal part of it. And I've lived on George Road my whole life. Um, I have a special needs sister and a twelve-year-old sister. I also know many neighbors and kids that live on that road. One of my biggest concerns is the traffic. I remember whenever I was little, I was able to drive down on the bike with all my neighbors. It was fine. I was not nervous. Neighbors there backed everyone up. It breaks my heart to see my sister can't even do that anymore. Not only that, but let alone the out-of-state license plates that have been out of that dirt road, um, one considering Utah, Nevada and Oregon. Um, so bringing the whole personal part into it, I would like you guys to step into our shoes and actually consider what we will go through and my grand, my mom's grandkids, my kids, my sister's kids. It's, we all grew up there and we consider the family to keep growing there. So thank you and I definitely oppose this.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in chambers who would like to speak on behalf of this? Okay, we have one more. Maybe two and a half more.
We'd prefer to hear from someone who hasn't yet spoken. Thanks.
My name is Don Duker. I live at forty-six seventy-five George Road. Through twenty sixteen, I sat in Christina's chair for four years. I'm, I'm familiar with this process and you got all my sympathy. Doing this with microphones and cameras sucks. Having said that, um, I, I'm the closest resident to the, to the grow as it exists and it probably impacted me the most, but certainly everybody else. And because I had a little more experience with some of this process than some other people and, and the time on my hands, I might, I'd like to address some of the aspects that, that they wouldn't necessarily be familiar with. In my hand, I have the, uh, the early activation permit for the grow last year. There were, there were thirty-three conditions required in that permit. Many of them were required before any cultivation. I think the minute they got the permit, they threw it away because most of them still haven't been complied with now. And because that overlaps a lot of the, overlaps a lot of the mitigation requirements for secret, the negative deck you're, you're being, you're being presented with, um, most of the medications are in that permit and they were never, never done last year before cultivation or up to now. The credibility on this is just zero. One of the requirements was notification for everybody within a thousand feet and they addressed it by saying nobody was within a thousand feet. Well, this is, this is a little more than four hundred feet outside my bedroom window and, and five acres of, of marijuana, we just couldn't open our windows anymore. It was pretty miserable. But it's not a problem if you just ignore the requirements. The, the other issues that I kind of would like to see addressed, um, apparently there's a thousand-foot setback from public lands. I, I don't think a three-hundred-foot setback is adequate for a commercial grow, but there's still a thousand-foot setback from public lands and, and I haven't seen my questions addressed as to whether the airport constitute public lands. That would prohibit this completely. I have asked, um, and, and I don't know. The, the water quality control board, last I saw there, there's still non-compliance for that, there are violation. Um, it's, it's required to, to have that addressed before any, any permit is issued. The performance review report... that addressed before any permit is issued. The performance review report is a pretty big deal, and the stuff I can see from my property or from public records, there's a dozen requirements in their early activation that weren't met. The rest of those items could probably be addressed through the compliance review. And it says, "Non-compliance submitting the annual performance review for review by the planning commission shall be deemed grounds for revocation of the development permit or use permit is subject to the holder of the pass." penalties outlined in this code.
I'm sorry, we are at our three-minute capacity. Thank you so much.
That review was never done.
Sir, can you state your name one more time?
Don Duker.
And, sir, could you tell me what the date you have is for early activation in that?
Yes, I have it. My hot little hand, it was activated 5/27/20.
Thanks.
And just so you're aware, here in chambers, once we get through the public comment and we go back to the Zoom, I feel like if there's additional comments that need to be made, if we can bring it back to chambers as well.
As long as there are new comments.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Steve Page, ag commissioner, what I failed to respond to was planning supposition that they're isolated. During asseted, the range land, pasture land is ag land. The ag land can be converted to grapes, pears, walnuts, anytime. Just so it's not, it's just because it's not being used now for crops doesn't mean it can't be used forever. Once the cannabis gets in, then that land would be probably restricted to only grazing due to the potential problems that cannabis has with nutritional crops. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Does that conclude comment in the chambers?
Mr. Chair, I do have one additional member of the public to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. Please be sure to state your first and last name.
Hello. Hi.
Hi.
My name is Diane Duker. I live at 4675 George Road, and I wrote a letter and submitted it on March 16th and hand-delivered it to planning on the 22nd of March, and it did not get entered into the record. I'm not going to read it to you because you've heard a lot of the same, but I do want to make sure it's part of the record. Okay? Thank you.
Ma'am, I did read something from you, I believe. And it was a well-written letter, by the way.
I'm, I also just wrote a little blurb when I submitted the 104 signatures in the petition, but that's different. That was just a paragraph. So hopefully you did see my letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, if you would like to open up the Zoom room for a comment, I don't believe there's anyone here that wishes to speak right now.
Thank you, Jake. Can we open the room for any comments in the Zoom room?
All right. It looks like the first hand up, I'm just going to go here. The first hand up I have here is from Joseph Gustafson, who I believe was the applicant. So I just want to check in with them real quick.
Can we have anybody else who hasn't spoken, and then we'll get back to the applicant?
All right. So the next hand I have up then is from Brenna Sullivan. Brenna, I have given you permission to speak, and it looks like you're unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Good morning, commissioners. Brenna Sullivan, Lake County Farm Bureau. So to add on to what the ag commissioner said, this project is not isolated from connected farmland and should have never qualified as isolated under the previous ordinance language. The project did have a prior requirement to grow within a greenhouse. This was not a new requirement with the creation of the farmland protection zone. Farm Bureau submitted a letter to the planning staff in June of 2020 that contextualized this prior exemption, which this project does not need. But as far as I'm aware, this is the first project in front of your planning commission that could make use of the recent sunset clause in the farmland protection zone that was recently approved by the Board of Supervisors. The staff report was a little unclear as to whether or not this project is seeking the sunset clause or not. I believe the term grandfathered in is used, but this is not what the sunset clause does, and I don't believe that term is used directly in the ordinance that was recently adopted. And as a reminder, the clause allows outdoor cultivation in hoop houses only within the project site area, after which the applicant has to transition into a filtered greenhouse. Farm Bureau opposes any major use permit that grants outdoor cultivation in a farmland protection zone that is not qualified under the sunset clause, and this project should not be approved as it sits before you today. If the application, if, I'm sorry, if the applicant is in good standing with the state and our local ordinance, and if the applicant has not violated any terms of their early activation permit, they then may be eligible for that transition period in which they can cultivate in a hoop house and then transition to a greenhouse. However, as the ag commissioner stated, this applicant is not eligible for the sunset clause as he is not currently in good standing with the state. Therefore, the outdoor cultivation component of this project should be denied entirely. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenna.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could just comment on Ms. Sullivan's comments, I continue to be confused about hoop houses versus greenhouses, and I'm the only commissioner left standing who was involved in crafting the original ordinance. And just in research for today's meeting, I went back and looked at Article 27 and hoop houses, and I won't read the whole thing, but the final sentence is hoop houses are prohibited. A greenhouse shall be a prefabricated structure constructed for nursery or agricultural purposes, which has a frame constructed of metal, and the panels must be polycarbonate or other similar material which is no less than four millimeters thick. The walls shall be opaque so that a person cannot see inside the greenhouse. Hoop houses are prohibited. So I don't understand how applicants get off on a track with the use of hoop houses. And I don't want to go off on a tangent in the context of this agenda item, but it would be very helpful to understand how hoop houses are still in the conversation. At some other point, I'm not, I don't, this is not on the agenda today, I understand.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the Zoom room with a hand up?
I guess I had a question to the end of the sentence there where it says hoop houses are prohibited. There's been so many different documents there. Is that hoop houses are prohibited for personal use, or is that just?
It just says hoop houses are prohibited.
Okay. I don't have it in front of me, so I'll just stop there.
Okay, thank you. Can we have the next hand in the Zoom room, please?
I had Brenna Sullivan raise her hand again. I also have a new hands. I don't know if you.
Take the new hand, please.
Okay. All right. So the next hand I have up here is from Trey Sherrill. It looks like you're unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Hi, my name is Trey Sherrill. I'm a consultant working with many, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I was just confirming. You're good to go.
Okay, thank you. My name is Trey Sherrill. I'm a consultant working with many licensed cannabis farmers in Lake County. I just wanted to speak to the hoop houses being prohibited comment. It is my understanding, I have Article 27 in front of me right now, the areas where hoop houses are discussed in Article 27 are in the sections that pertain to personal cultivation. In the sections of Article 27 that pertain to commercial cannabis cultivation, hoop houses are not minted at all, which is kind of one of the problems. But that's the end of my comment. Thank you very much.
Anybody else in the Zoom room, Jake?
We have only two hands left standing, and both of them are repeat comments. And maybe only one. Okay. All right. So I just want to check in here with Joseph Gustafson again, that your hand is still raised. Just wanted to check to see if you had another comment.
Hello, sir. How you doing today?
Good, thank you.
I would just like to comment back to some of the neighbors' feelings here. I want to let you guys know that my CDFW violations that I did have were actually like 50-year-old culverts that were wrong on the property when I got it, and they have since then been mitigated. I am in good standings with the state, and if this is approved, I will get a state license. I will not be growing any cannabis until I do get a state license. The road that I did there is gravelled. I spent a lot of money grabbing it, and I will be paving it if I'm approved. If not, I'll just be doing grapes, which obviously nobody cares about the dust if I'm just doing grapes. I have went to all the neighbors that did answer their door on three different days. I'm a pretty busy guy. I don't have like every day to keep going out. However, I did speak to a lot of the neighbors. I'm sorry for the ones that I did not get to go to. I have made my number, which is 707-350-0270, public knowledge for them to have. I have not built anything on the property whatsoever at all. We have only been staging things in the terms to get approved, which I have been inspected by code enforcement and the county on two different times, which proves that I have not built anything or it would be canceled. George Road is a paved road, a not very good paved road, so I do have a property connected to Matthews. So in the future, I plan on using Matthews. I am only trying to grow outdoor one year, just to be clear with everybody, so that they are aware that I would be going to full greenhouses next season. However, I'm not opposed to going to greenhouses this season. We don't want to be the burden on any neighbor or anybody who lives in that area. Most of the people, well, not most, but I've got 14 people that signed the petition that did call me back and say they were very unaware of what petition they were signing, that Don Duscher was not very informative as to what exact grow mine was, but they signed it anyhow. If anybody has any comments about the trash, I do very much apologize for that. When we were doing work, there is a lot of wind in the off-season. We do plan on putting trash catchers. At this point, there isn't a piece of trash left on the ground. I have had it all cleaned up. The traffic is more everywhere now than it was 20 years ago. I apologize to the girl who can't go down the road as much. However, I do only have daily actions happening with 14 people. However, there is more people during setup and during takedown, but only those days. The property was in horrible disarray when I got it. The grapes were doing very bad. There was people squatting on the land, living in the house, who were convicted felons, who we had since got out. Most of the conditions, the reason why I didn't do a lot of the things with the permit is because you cannot do things under early activation. So as a company, we wish we didn't grow. We did not harvest marijuana and sell it. It was actually taken from us by the courts. I would like to let that be known too. So it's not like we as a company grew marijuana last year illegally. All of my violations have been taken care of at this time. I'd just like to state that. And yeah, I am here for anybody. I, you know, all the neighbors, I do feel about the ag thing. I mean, we're not trying to grow outdoor on ag land. We understand that whole role too. And we're here to work with you guys. You know, I'm not the thorn in Lake County's side. I've lived here for 40 years. I have three businesses here local. I employ 47 people throughout those three businesses, and I aim to do everything right and the best that I can at my ability. And that's it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a question for the applicant.
Okay, please do.
Thank you for your comments and your reference to the CDFW letter. I might circle back to that. But in an exchange between Ham Satur and the Water Boards dated as late as February 24, Satur was told that this discharger has been under scrutiny from the Water Board, CDFW, and CDFA on multiple of his sites. There was a site visit in 7/1/2020 and found violations copied below. The site is now registered as a Tier 2 high-risk site with the Central Valley Water Board as they have disturbed area within the water course setbacks. CDFW, CDFA, and the Water Board are meeting by tele-meeting tomorrow to discuss Mr. Gustafson and all of his sites in Lake County. You followed up appropriately with the Water Boards to ask if that had been resolved, and the response was as of March 4, 2021. Good morning, Satur. I would not say that it has been resolved. He has done everything we, the Central Valley Water Board, have asked him to do. However, CDFW is the lead agency on this, and when I last spoke to Dustin of CDFW one week ago, Mr. Gustafson, in other words, after the tele-meeting, had still not notified CDFW. It is my understanding that CDFW has asked him to do so multiple times, and that until he does so, he is not permitted to do any of the remediation work, and until he completes the work, he will be in violation. There are multiple sites operated by Mr. Gustafson that are in the same situation, and in addition to George Road, three sites on Spruce Grove Road are mentioned. Are you saying all of those violations or concerns have been resolved post-March 421?
So can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So all of, I will say, I had one violation, which was me, that we had placed a pipe where it wasn't supposed to go. However, out of my nine violations, eight of them, or no, seven of them were culverts. One of them was trash on the property, which was about 50 years old. It was a really old barn that someone had thrown in a creek. I get it when you buy a piece of property, that you buy the violations to go along with it. I have been in very good contact with Dustin Patterson from Fish and Wildlife. It's a, it's a long procedure to get those things mitigated. I mean, it's thousands and thousands of dollars in months of time. However, I am in good standing with them, and all of those things have been corrected. It's, it's just, it's one of those things where if you do a lot of projects, unfortunately, you're going to end up getting more violations than the next guy. However, I, you know, I have stepped up, and I have taken care of all the violations at this point. I'm just waiting for them to come out and do the field study, for me to do the work. So it will be, you know, more of a process, but definitely, we're not growing on any site until we get those things done, and we are up to date on them.
I didn't understand your answer. Are you saying that there are no violations currently on any of those Spruce Grove Road properties?
No.
And so that all of those state agencies have signed off?
Couldn't be more currently up to date. So when they give you a violation, you have to do a mitigation plan. So in order to do a mitigation plan, you have to get an engineer, which costs you about $9,000. Then you have to get a mitigation survey plan done through a surveyor, which costs you about $6,000. So then those get turned in to CDFW, then there's an $8,000 fee for being in high risk. Then you pay that fee, and then they get back to you as to when they can come out and do the field study. So yeah, they are still listed as a violation. However, they're like a current violation to be fixed. So they just give you a note that says that you can't do anything for it on the project until the violation is taken up, and this is the date we can come out and fix the violation. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, but regarding the costs you incur regarding these properties, you yourself noted that you inherit the problems with the properties when you purchase them.
Yes. Yes, you do. And so that's, like I said, mine, most of my violations are undersized culverts. And so there's not much I can do besides to wait for the permit and wait till April 15th of this year to start the permit process, because you have to wait for the off-season to get into the creeks to change the culverts. Does that, does that make, does that clear it up for you?
I understand your answer. I don't necessarily.
I think you're awesome.
I understand your answer, sir. I don't necessarily agree with it.
But I'm finished.
Well, I mean, it's just the truth. If you get a violation, you either have a violation where you're in bad terms, where you're not fixing the violation, or you're in a picture where you're farcical.
Commissioners don't lead a lecture on the process and mitigations. We're familiar with that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are there any more hands in the Zoom room? If not, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission for any further questions.
If I may, Mr. Chair, this is Nicole. I wanted to respond to, Commissioner Hess's question earlier about hoop houses. Whoop houses, the prohibition for hoop houses that you cited is actually located within the private adult-use, non-commercial section. And there is not a prohibition that I could find for hoop houses within the commercial section of the cannabis.
I appreciate, I appreciate that, Nicole. What I was referring to was page 31 of Article 27. It's under Section 15, and it's Item F. Item F begins with a greenhouse shall and finishes with hoop houses are prohibited. Item F begins with a greenhouse shell and finishes with hoop houses are prohibited.
Uh Commissioner Hes, if I, if I could, Scott DeLeon. Hoop houses were introduced here just a couple of weeks ago uh at the board as a temporary means of getting through the transition period for those applicants who found themselves within the new farmland uh protection zones. Um and and there was some language about, you know, if their application was complete uh by a certain date, then they would be allowed three years to to uh accomplish the transition from outdoor cultivation to indoor cultivation with the use of of a hoop house. And it was defined, and and I'm going off of memory here, it was defined loosely as uh, you know, a temporary structure. Uh there were going to be conditions about they had to be removed at the end of the growing season and they were, they were simply there to provide uh a protection uh and a barrier uh to to the plants.
Thank you, Scott. I appreciate that. I'm just, I'm, I'm getting a growing impression that prior to these, to that most recent action, hoop houses have been in much more regular use than I realized.
Well, just that the section you cited, um presum- on twenty-seven dash thirty-one.
Yeah.
F is still within um twenty-seven point three parenthetical Z, adult use, adult personal use qualified patient, primary caregiver cannabis cultivation section. The commercial section is twenty-seven point thirteen parenthetical A T, which is much farther down and there isn't a hoop house prohibition.
No, thank you. And as I said, this was a tangent. This wasn't a fall on my sword issue today. But there are confusing sections in terms of harmonized language.
Mr. Chair, if I may, carry on.
Yes.
We still have two hands up in the Zoom room, one being uh the applicant and the other being Brenna Sullivan. Did we want to go back and um and and see if they had anything to say and then close out public comment?
Uh I was under the impression there were no remaining hands. Um the applicant is free to respond to questions from the Commission. If um Brenna has additional comments that she didn't provide, which are new comments, I am open to hearing those if the Commission pleases.
Uh Mr. Chair, if I may, I would like to hear um Brenna's response.
Me too.
Please.
Okay, go forward with uh Brenna's response, please.
Okay, Brenna, I muted you.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is Brenna Sullivan again. And real quickly, I just wanted to respond because it was my comment that prompted Commissioner Hess's question about the hoop houses. So I wanted to clarify what I meant about that. And as Director DeLeon referenced, this was just in reference to the mitigation that was put in place for the sunset clause. And Commissioner Hess, you are correct in that previously to that little piece in the sunset clause, um hoop houses were not qualified as a greenhouse under the farmland protection. It had to be filtered structured greenhouse. This was just a mitigation measure. It's still considered outdoor cultivation, but the hoop house was a a protectionary measure to get through that transitionary period. So that, that's what I meant by my comment, not that they should be used as a um, you know, to a substitute for the the mixed light. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Brenna.
Thank you. With that, we will close public comment and bring it back to the Commission for any further questions. Any discussion?
I guess I, Lance, I've spoken a lot. I didn't hear anybody saying anything, so you go right ahead.
I I guess there are some questions or, you know, getting this in front of us. I think it was um about six days ago. Um the five twenty-seven twenty date of early activation comes back where I've, I'm kind of curious again, state license, I'm kind of interested with council questions and with staff, you know, you know, are there open things with uh fish and game? How does this uh affect our vote? Can we vote on something like this? Uh and how would we go forward if we were going to vote on something that uh I, that would have to conform? I believe, again, my personal opinion is that it is not in an isolated area and should have never been outdoors. So definitely a few questions there uh in itself. But I think they 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 would have to be, I need to kind of see some answers coming my way before I can go in any direction.
Uh if I may, Mr. Chair. Uh Com- Commissioner Williams, just to clarify your questions, there were a few in there, it seems. Um two mainly referencing the new ordinance, it sounded like, and the effective date of the permit. And then the second one being, um how does the Commission handle questions about the applicants um having met criteria for other agencies, correct? The, as far as the act, the uh adopted ordinance and the effective date of the of the permit, Council feels that the language in the condition that we provided would would satisfy that in that the permit cannot be effective under that ordinance until the effective date of the ordinance. If we were to apply it, uh if we were to, if you were to look to make that permit effective after your vote today, we would have to apply the ordinance as it stands today. That means that the the so-called sunset clause or grandfather clause um under, the the language adopted under ordinance um three one zero three would not apply. But again, that condition should take care of that in the sense that this particular permit or any permit adopted under that ordinance three one zero three cannot be effective effective and under that condition will not be effective until, unless and until that ordinance is effective. And there is still a remote, albeit remote, chance that that ordinance could be challenged and not become effective thirty days from Tuesday this week. But um assuming that it is, then the effective date for both the ordinance and the permit will be five twenty twenty-one. And the language in the condition does require that no permitted activity under that permit be performed between now and then. And if it is, then the permit is revocable. Because they will be in violation of the ordinance, taking actions that were not otherwise approved. Um as far as if your Commission or as Commissioners, if you're in, if you have concerns about information that is, that if you think is missing and can be provided, you can certainly ask staff uh to clarify and or provide that information to you if you think that uh it's necessary and it's it's somewhere available to help inform your decision. You could certainly do that. If you feel you have the information in front of you as far as whether or not an individual uh qualifies and for the permit and you can make the findings within the 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 staff report, um if you think all that information is there, you can either approve or disapprove the permit based on that information in front of you and how you weigh it as individual Commissioners. So if you think that the person does not meet criteria that are required in order for you to make a finding, then you would vote no. If you think that they do, you would vote yes. But again, if you think that that information is not there and that it could be, you can ask staff to provide it.
Thank you very much, and I will ask staff after.
Commissioner Hess, do you have anything to say before I kind of?
You go right ahead.
Okay. Um first, I want to thank the members of the public for coming out. Greatly appreciate your um presence here. I did go out um to the property. George Road, yes, county maintained. I understand that. Um it's a dead-end road, for those of you who don't know. Um when I went out to the project location, it is on a dirt road and yes, there was a gate. Um my, my question when I arrived at the property was, you know, there's a whole bunch of houses right there, like where have you, you know, how are, how do the neighbors feel about that? And um it, it wasn't really acknowledged or discussed too much more than that. Um however, the amount, I could only imagine um the amount of traffic that will be on that dirt road to and from um George Road to the actual project site. Um that is something concerning to me. Um the applicant did mention, you know, he he would be open to paving the road. He would be open to fixing the culverts and, you know, basically, he wants to make it right for um the surrounding properties. Um I honestly don't, my my major concern is the amount of traffic on that. It it reminded me of basically of a vineyard road, an agr- an agricultural road that was used for light traffic um that-a-way. Um also, yeah, I lost my train of thought. I'm gonna, I'll chew on that for a minute.
I'd be happy to fill in a gap as you try to recollect your thoughts.
Yes, yeah. Obviously, my my train of thought and my red bullet just kind of went off.
Just something I'm throwing out for my colleagues to consider, and it's not an original idea. It's based on a letter from the Lake County Chamber of Commerce. A path forward, if that's what the Commission is looking to find, is um some agreement with the applicant to repurpose his application and design it for indoor use and just apply for a conforming use from the county. That's a technical concept. And it's not something, I have not been out to the site. I have not discussed this application with any members of the public or neighbors of that. But um it's a path forward. Otherwise, I do have concerns about the the application as it is before us.
Um I will echo that. Um and I do believe, you know, the applicant is open to doing um indoor or inside of a greenhouse, even if it's, like he said, um this season to begin with, or give him a year to get into compliance that way. Um another one of my biggest concerns is I would like to know that these violations that were noted um have been taken care of. Um it's one thing to have a violation on one project, but multiple on multiple addresses is a little concerning to me. Um and, you know, we talk a lot about bad actors and we want to really set the bar and do things very clean. And um I feel like it's hard to not take that into consideration or without having any type of proof of clearance or um how it was remedied.
And I I echo that as well. As I said, I believe that this should be under the farmland protection zone currently. I am concerned, uh Steve had brought up that this one was not currently licensed. And as I'm reading, I don't want to do any illegal activity in my mind of letting something go through when it says clearly on our ordinance that it must be in good standing. And so I don't think I have the evidence as this goes forward unless um staff can provide that these uh violations have been truly cleared. And so um I I was not able to find out on my own, so I can't make a decision currently.
Commissioner Williams, um I've kind of been monitoring emails here during most of this morning's discussions and uh as uh recent as ten fifty-six this morning, um there are still outstanding violations. However, uh it's CDFA's position that it appears that he's working on those with Fish and Wildlife and their agency. Uh but nonetheless, they still exist. They're, they aren't all completely cleared. But uh it appears that he's working on it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Commissioner Chavez, do you have any comments?
I don't know if he heard you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chavez, do you have any comments? I see the um applicant's hand is up again. So I did want to um, if he had any new information to respond to any of the questions or concerns, provide him an opportunity.
I have no comments, so we can actually, uh if you want to give the applicant an opportunity to speak, I'm okay with that. Okay, thank you.
I've asked the applicant to um unmute Mr. Joseph Gustafson, if he'd like to say something.
Thank you, Keryon. Um so yeah, my, the violations, like I said, they are not cleared, but they are up to date. So the only thing I have left to do, Lance, is just have them come to the site and at that point they clear. So I I don't plan on growing anything until I'm state legal. So that's the thing is you can't get state legal until you have an approved use from it. I have applied for a state at Lakeport and I have a deficiency. The deficiency is the the site visit has to be done by CDFW. So they said they're down, you know, they're gonna do it and they cleared me. And I have to have an approved use from it. So if I don't have an approved use from it today, I'll never get a state license. And that's just the way that it works, but so and the, and the other thing is I'm, I fully agree with you on the the sunlight clause. I'm not referring with worrying, but the, I do realize where my property sits. It wasn't there, you know, it wasn't considered that zoning when I started. So that we did start with an outdoor project, but it is a one-year outdoor project. And now I've realized that the zoning has been changed. I mean, if if it's to conform, I'm ready to conform this year. It's just gonna, and I, and I won't grow this year because I'll be building, you know. So whatever it takes, I'm just here to work with the community and work with the neighbors and work with everybody to make it an actual functioning business. Because it's not, Lake County doesn't get any better, you know?
Thank you. Um Scott, I have a question for you. It regards him saying that, again, he cannot get a state license. Um and so, again, that's something that has come up. Is that the order of things?
Uh to my knowledge, it is. We have conditions in our permit that say, you know, we've been down this a lot. Uh kind of chicken and the egg uh scenario and and, you know, our conditions uh require that they have a state permit. And it's my understanding that the state requires that they have a local permit before they'll issue a state permit, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff or applicant?
Um no more questions, just um uh I would like to say that the applicant sounds like uh he's in good faith into wanting to move on with his project. And he's, by the way, or by the things he's been saying, he seems like he's uh trying to figure out the issues that are being uh spoken about today uh with regards to, you know, concerns about the trash. Um he said uh he's been taking care of that um along with uh, you know, providing his personal number to the neighbors to make sure that if they have any concerns that he's willing to talk to them and work with them. So I'm seeing um him acting in good faith and wanting to get his project completed. Uh so I'm, um that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Chavez. You know, I actually want to say um, take it into consideration uh the public comment, uh what staff has, the information staff has provided, council, uh Scott, you know, I, I believe, uh, you know, good faith is is important, um but I also am concerned with the comments that were made by community and and the surrounding neighbors. And so I think for myself, um I would like to get a more stronger commitment from the applicant on that they are gonna, in fact, move forward with with the good faith, that they are gonna do what's required, which it sounds like the applicant is saying. Um so at this point, I'm still um a little hesitant to support this action. But I do want to hear if any other Commissioners have anything they want to add to regarding the information that was provided.
Mr. Chair? Um I I share, I share your reservations. To be candid, out of all of the many applications we've processed as a Commission, I haven't opposed any of them because I believe that um such a finding could not be made. But I um, I, I wouldn't call the applicant's responses as, call them cavalier, but perhaps supremely optimistic in the fact that its state agency may schedule an appointment to inspect your property does not mean that they're going to sign off on that inspection. And uh where I stand today is I would not personally be prepared to make a motion, to second a motion or to support such a motion to approve. And that would be a first for me. motion, or to support such a motion to approve, and that would be a first for me.
Mr. Chair, if I may, and Commissioner Hess, I'm with you, I'm with you 100%. I don't feel, I don't feel one way or the other weighted as far as how I'm feeling. I don't, I'm not ready either.
I believe I'm, I'm sitting in the same chair as the two of you, that at this point in time, I see that there can be a pathway forward, and that pathway would be going into this with the greenhouses and the farmland protection zone. I was hoping today that staff would be able to tell me that, yes, all of these violations have a pathway forward. There was a lot of reading for the last four or five days of all these different projects, and I did reach out to try to find out if these things were going to be corrected, what stage they were in, and so, to me, it puts me in a weird bind, being from the cannabis community, but I also really wanna make sure that this can happen, and so I don't really have the answer right now. We've heard from people in the community that said yes on one project right next door, and then no on another, so, so that's where I'm standing right now. I believe that this is, again, back to a land use issue, though, and so can this land be used this way? And again, I, I just really wish I had more information, and again, what was brought up was that early activation, and so, and Joey, Mr. Gustafson, has mentioned that he, the courts had taken some weed, I'm kinda confused at this stage. So, I would wanna see court documents, because I don't get it, and so I really wanna make sure that, again, I would not be, I would not wanna be in this position where, being from the cannabis, and as you've said, you've never voted against, I don't wanna vote against anything, but I would have to abstain today, so that's, that's where I am.
Can you guys still hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, I don't know where you're coming from, but we can hear you.
So my, the violations, I don't, I don't understand how, Scott made it very clear that CDFW and CFA commented that I am in good standings, there's no other way you can be, you're either in bad standings with the violation or you're in good standings with the violation. So, I mean, I'm definitely in good standings with the state, and I do understand, as of like the early activation, I don't think a lot of people fully understood how it worked last year, and I'm not the only person who actually grew cannabis, there was hundreds of people who grew cannabis with early activation, and if any of them sold it, then it had to be illegal, because state tags are the only way to do legal grow. So now that I realize that, I would never move forward with any project I have without having the full state license and all of it, so I do get how the situation fully works. I just don't want to be rejected on a project that has a timeline, and if I'm not approved today, it's like I might as well not be approved ever, because there's a timeline to getting the process started, you know, so my deficiency really is based off of just not having a use permit, so if I could get this approved today, if I'm not approved by the state later, then I would never be able to actually move forward with this project anyway. So I'm really looking out for your guys' support on this, it's been a year and a half since I turned it in, you know, if you guys weren't so backed up, I would've been seen last year, obviously, but my phase two is all indoor lands, are you, all you guys, and I am willing to start at phase two, that's the other thing. So if you just look at my project with phase two, then if we started with that, that that would exclude the outdoor thing altogether.
I don't think the commission could approve the application as written today, based on your assurances that you want to go indoors as quickly as possible, that is not what is before us, unfortunately, although I, I believe you when you say that, and I don't mean to sound like I'm lecturing you, but I don't know how long you've owned the four properties, George and the three Spruce Grove addresses, but perhaps it would've been better to address the violations that were existed on the property before filing your grow application.
And again, I, maybe there is a path forward, a continuance with no set date, and when the violations are cleared, because, again, I think that's one of the things that we are definitely looking at, because I don't wanna be the person as the downer, but it sounds like there is the same feelings there, that we feel uneasy. I'm not exact, I don't know the exact language there, but again, it says, must be in good standing, and working on things is a start, but I, I mean, I think we'd wanna see violations cleared. I don't think we've had any issues that have been brought to our attention where there is outstanding violations, and so that's where I think there's a lot of uncomfortableness here, so I don't want to put this all the way out the door, but I would wanna say that these violations can be cleared. It sounds like to me it's a fishing game, and fishing game would have nothing to do with getting a state license in that respect, I think it's just curing that violation. So, so I think this has been brought to us in some ways in a premature state, and at least we've been able to hear the neighbors and see their concerns. In full disclosure, I drove down there this morning and went down the road till it said private road, I saw signs saying there were kids to slow down, so I've definitely heard the neighbors, but there seem to be other concerns, and the concerns that I'm, I'm working with right now are the fact that it states very clearly that they must be in good standing, and I don't feel that way currently. So I don't know if anyone else would like to, again, say that this one, the violations are cleared, that this is done, then it could come back. But again, I'm just listening to the two people here, I know there was, it sounded like, one of the commissioners also, who's not here, felt, you know, a little uneasy too, so I think I'm just trying to listen to the commissioners and see where we stand.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to get my, my words together. This will go, this question's for the applicant. You have considered using Matthews Road, correct, for access?
Yeah, I own a piece of property on Matthews that, that I would, wouldn't mind, you know, having George Road be a fire use only, or, you know, like an emergency zone, and just going on Matthews. I mean, like I said, I'm willing to conform either way. I, I wish that people were more informed as to how it worked with the whole violation thing, but I definitely am in good standings, and I don't have open violations as soon as the people show up to do. Like the mitigation plan tells you how to fix the violation, and then I already have all the stuff there to fix the violation, just sitting there next to the culverts, you know, so I think I'm a week away from the appointment for them to come, but other than that, like, yeah, the Matthews Road would be perfect if it made the neighbors feel better about it. I think the traffic is, has been a lot because of construction, but once construction and things like that, like, we've had a lot of drop-offs and deliveries, and they don't schedule them correctly, so they come and go, but, other than that, like, if there's anything I can do to help any of the neighbors, I'm definitely here to, to work with them and to solve any problems that come up.
Thank you, and I also, you know, with item number one, just it being in such close proximity to your project, I, I can't help but think of the usage on, not only George Road being a county maintained road, but like I said, the road to your project, if, if there's another way to go about it, or to, to utilize another access point to where your impact on the surrounding area and neighbors is a little less, regardless of time of day, peak season, what have you, I'd like to see that.
Absolutely.
So, to sum it up, I honestly feel that not only myself, but my fellow commissioners aren't 100% ready to make a motion at this time. Does anyone else have anything to say?
No, I'd like to hear from the chair at this point.
You know, I'm thinking too, in terms of moving forward, continuing this item to another date, provide opportunity for additional remedies from the applicant, maybe at that time, the community members will have additional input to any changes or modifications that might happen. As, as I stated, as the applicant, application stands, I'm not comfortable with, with everything moving forward, I understand the applicant's, the kind of predicament he's in, in terms of being able to get those violations completely off of, off of the record, in terms of them being addressed, that can't happen until the county issues a permit, so I recognize the sensitivity of that as well, so I would like to get your guys' input on possible continuation, which would provide a path forward, or read the motion, or read the sample motions, and see how everybody chooses to vote.
Does the applicant feel that 30 days would be an adequate amount of time to, to provide staff with updated information? And clearance, technically?
Yeah, I mean, are you guys against moving it forward with conditions, like where you just say if you do this, you're approved, if you don't? Because then I actually have like a guideline of things that I can do, other than wasting time, money, and, you know, things that's something that's gonna get disapproved later, because, like, you know, I, I've honestly, just to give you guys real numbers, like, I bought the property for a lot of money, I've lost a lot of money that will be forfeited if, if this doesn't go through, so, you know, if it goes on longer and longer, it's just more of a burden on me than it is, you know, me trying to boost the economy in the local areas. So, if there is a path forward in your guys' eyes, where you say, hey, look, we want you to go indoor, we want you to pave the road, if you guys said, hey, this is your thing, then I would say yes, whatever that is, and I can do it, you know?
Seems to me there's inherent risk in any investment. I would, I would support a continuation, and it would certainly be important to me that anything, any violations are cleared up before we hear this matter again, although I still am not in support of it as an outdoor grow, so just to project my thinking forward. But if the issue before us today is a vote to continue, sure.
Yes, and I would put a vote to continue, and then in 30 days, this would be under the farmland protection zone anyways, and it would supposed to, it would should, it should be put into greenhouses or into hoop houses, so I don't think we'd run into it because that's 30 days, is that correct, council?
Yes, Commissioner, in 30 days, and I think the next commission meeting after the 30-day date would be the 27th of May. At that point, the ordinance adopted this week would be in effect, and whatever requirements, rights and responsibilities were adopted under that ordinance would apply to this permit.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you so much, and then I will also try, just, I mean, if I'm a little concerned about this project, and I feel that, that this person is in a bind, I will also reach out myself, just to see, you know, if I'm told by the fishing game that this thing could take longer, then I could put that in consideration, I would ask Sator to go out there and look, Scott to try to find out all the information, so when we're here in 30 days, we're not in a boat where we cannot come up with an answer, but I think all the commissioners want the same answer, that this is, this is a positive project, and we're doing the right thing.
Well, I haven't said that yet. The, the point about the violations is that you may have hauled in all the equipment at all different times of day to begin remediation, to have it in place, but you can't begin the remediate, you're considered in violation until the, the state agencies involved find you not to be in violation, and so that is not something the county is imposing on you or holding you back in any way.
What do you mean by that, you guys aren't holding you back from doing the work?
I mean that regardless of how much you've invested, or whether we are concerned about violations on other county property, we are not the approving agency, you have to satisfy the state departments involved, and until they say you're clean, you're not allowed to remediate, and so you continue to be in violation.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, and I'm out of violation, and they'll come out soon and let me know the date I can remediate. I actually just paid my final fees last, two days ago, just so you know, they're just hard, it's hard, it's a hard process to get through.
If, if my fellow commissioners have nothing else further at this time to say, I'm ready to make a motion to table this item.
I am ready for a motion, for everybody else's.
Yes.
I move that the planning commission table this item until 5/27/2021. I don't know what else to say.
I second that.
Are you, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
I would like to table the item until the...
Table or continue?
Continue.
You would like to continue the item?
I'd like to continue the item till 5/27/2021.
Of the regular meeting for 5/27/2021, yes. Thank you, Nicole.
I second that.
Do you have a second?
There was a second.
Okay. Vote call, vote please.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion still carried.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
I know we have a hefty remainder of the agenda coming up, I would like to request at least a five-minute break, maybe more, I know...
A comfort break, yes.
Yeah, just kinda reset, refresh, and get ready to, for the long afternoon hall, if, if we can, please.
Yes, do we wanna do 15 minutes, 12, 25, or?
If we can come back to chambers at 12:30, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Okay, let's do that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, we will continue our 9:25, pick up our 9:25 a.m. item, public hearing to consider rezone, RZ19-02, and general plan amendment, GPAP19-02, to change the zoning of a property from R3 high-density residential to R1 low-density residential, to change the generalation of a property from high-density residential to low-density residential, in consideration of a mitigated negative declaration, IS-19, excuse me, IS19-41. So the, let's see, the applicant, owner's Richard Siri proposed project rezone, a general plan amendment, a property presently zoned R3, location 4, Lake Shore Boulevard, Lakeport, California, APN029-141-22, environmental evaluation, mitigated negative declaration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Eric Porter, Associate Planner, Lake County. As chairman indicated, applicant supplied for a rezone and a general plan amendment on July 10th of 2019, I believe. The initial study was sent to the State Clearinghouse, staff received no adverse comments regarding the proposal. I'd like to refer you to page two, the zoning map, and it shows kind of a snapshot of the general area, one of the criteria that we look at at staff level, and this is not, to my knowledge, in state statutes, but as a matter of good planning practices, we do not encourage rezones in areas where properties around the proposed rezoned property are dissimilar. What the applicant's asking for is actually in, in harmony with the properties to the south and the properties to the east, all of which are zoned R1. The current owner of the property seeks to build a single-family dwelling, which is not allowed under the R3 zone, the property is a lake-fronting property, and in the applicant's mind is ideal for a single-family, but due to the size and configuration of the lot, is not ideal for multi-family. Consequently, he's applied for a rezone. Two things I need to clarify, first of all, the motions that were given to you in the staff report are in error, I sent out revised motions approximately a week ago, those were made available to the public and should've been received by all the planning commissioners... commissioners. And the revised motions are entitled Siri GPAP nineteen oh two, RZ IS, total zone changes for twenty twenty one, and amended motions. First item I need to clarify is that this is the first zone change that is being brought to the planning commission in year twenty twenty one, and the relevance to that is because you're only allowed to do four per year. And so after this one, you'll have three left that we can bring before you. We have another one that's already been to the planning commission in twenty twenty, and I'm not quite sure how that works in terms of the maximum of four per year. I'm guessing that that one that's essentially ready to bring to the board would be considered as one of the four as well. So my proposal, or my plan, is to bring the Siri general plan amendment rezone and the Brand general plan amendment rezone, which has already been heard by the planning commission to the board at the same date. So getting back to the Siri rezone, we made some findings, and the proposal is consistent with the general plan, which allows for a diversity of different zoning districts and different housing densities. There are several housing-related goals that apply. Actually, there's just one, and it's mentioned in the staff report. The plan is within the lake area plan boundary, and the proposal does not conflict with increases or density or decreases of density within that lake, Lakeport area plan, policies and goals. We evaluated it for compliance with the zoning ordinance, Article ten, in particular, the R one zoning district. The lot would meet the requirements for a brand-new lot within the R one zoning district if it were to be newly created. However, they're not proposing any changes to the boundary of the lot. It's also compliant with Article forty-seven, which is ordinance text amendment and rezoning amendment, which is intended to provide community welfare, public necessity, or changes in state law, and applicability of the general plan. I I can talk. We did an environmental review. Initial study IS nineteen dash forty-one was sent to the state, I believe, in early twenty twenty, and again, no adverse comments were received from that initial study. There were some potential concerns pertaining to air quality, biological resources, and they did do a biological resource assessment and provided that. And so we added several recommendations from the bio study that are shown as mitigation measures, Bio one through Bio five. Cultural tribal resources, those are fairly boilerplate. If any significant or potentially significant artifacts are unearthed during site disturbance, then certain treatments have to occur to respectfully inter or relocate or for the overseeing the culturally affiliated tribe to take care of. So given that, staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend that the board adopt mitigated negative declaration IS nineteen dash forty-one for general plan amendment GPAP nineteen oh two and rezone nineteen oh two, with the findings that are listed in page seven of the staff report. Staff is recommending that um that the planning commission recommend approval of general plan amendment GPAP nineteen oh two and rezone nineteen oh two to the board with the findings that are listed on page seven and page eight of the staff report. One last housekeeping item that I need to mention, there was a cut-and-paste issue that came up, and I need to make some clarifications to the conditions. In the opening paragraph of the conditions, it refers to rezone eighteen oh two. That is not the correct number. The correct number should be nineteen oh two. On the bottom of page one, it lists parse or subsection B parcel map conditions. The entirety of section B can be eliminated because no parcel maps are proposed. That was a cut-and-paste error on my part. And finally, in condition C mitigation measures, it refers to use permit approval that should read rezone and general plan amendment. That's in subsection C one. C two, first sentence refers to parcel map, that can be stricken. And so with that, I have no further comments unless there are any questions.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Eric. Do we have any questions for Eric?
No questions, Mr. Chair. It seems pretty straightforward.
No questions.
I don't have any questions as well. It's um, it's a pretty straightforward change, especially since there's no lot line adjustments or anything like that.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any, I guess with that, we'll open it up to public comment. Do we have anybody in the chambers that wishes to speak on this item?
No one who would like to speak on this item. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any, um, anybody wishing to speak on this item in the Zoom room, Jake?
At this time, it does not look like we have any hands raised in the Zoom room.
Okay, thank you. We'll bring it back to the commission. I don't have any comments or concerns with this project, so I'd like to move forward, or if there's any discussion or comments from the commissioners?
No comments.
Okay, um, if uh, if none of the other commissioners have anything to say, I am prepared to make a motion. Okay. Um, I move, I move that the planning commission find that the general plan amendment GPAP nineteen dash zero two and rezone RZ nineteen dash zero two, applied for by Richard and Beverly Siri on property located at four four three six Lakeshore Boulevard, Lakeport, further described as APN zero two nine dash one four one dash two two, recommends, sorry, that the Board of Supervisors adopt the mitigated declaration IS one nine dash four one, based on the findings set forth in the staff reported dated April twenty-second, twenty twenty one.
Second?
Roll call, vote please.
Commissioner Hough?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
I move that the planning commission find that the general plan amendment GPAP nineteen dash zero two, applied for by Richard and Beverly Siri on property located at four four three six Lakeshore Boulevard, Lakeport, further described as APN zero two nine dash one four one dash two two, does meet the requirements of section forty-seven point twenty-two and article ten of the Lake County zoning ordinance, and recommends that the Board of Supervisors adopt the general plan amendment, subject to the findings listed in the staff report dated April twenty-second, twenty twenty one.
Second? Roll call, vote please.
Commissioner Hough?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
Lastly, I move that the planning commission find the rezone RZ nineteen dash zero two, applied for by Richard and Beverly Siri on property located at four four three six Lakeshore Boulevard, Lakeport, further described as APN zero two nine dash one four one dash twenty-two, does meet the requirements of section forty-seven point twenty-two and article ten of the Lake County zoning ordinance, and recommends that the Board of Supervisors grant the rezone, subject to the findings in the staff report dated April twenty-second, twenty twenty one.
Second?
Roll call, vote please.
Commissioner Hough?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
I'd like to note that the applicant or any issued person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven-counter-day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the planning commission, appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to five PM, on and before the seven-counter-day following commission's final determination. Okay, we'll take up item six, public hearing to consider major use permit, GP nineteen dash oh eight. The applicant owner, Golden State Herb, proposed project, one A type-three medium outdoor commercial cannabis cultivation license, four A type-two small outdoor cannabis or commercial cannabis licenses, and one A type thirteen self-distribution license. Location eight five five zero, Highway one seventy-five, Kelseyville, California, APN zero one one dash zero five five dash zero six. Environmental evaluation mitigated, negative declaration IS nineteen dash one four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eric Porter, Associate Planner, Lake County. This item was brought before the Planning Commission back in winter of this last year, and it was brought to the Planning Commission at a time when separation from established ag uses was in a state of flex. This is one of the ones that qualifies under the newly adopted ordinance number thirty-one oh three, and the applicant's aware of that. She has the ability to transition from hoop houses to greenhouses within a set period of time. I believe it's up to three years, based on the terms of the newly adopted ordinance thirty-one oh three. Subject sites located at eighty-five fifty, Highway one seventy-five in Kelseyville. It's fifty-two point nine acres in size. The cultivation area would actually decrease because it was originally proposed to be an outdoor cultivation of a hundred and five thousand square feet. If the applicant agrees to the terms of newly adopted ordinance thirty-one oh three, this would require a revision showing probably a reduction in total square footage. However, the applicant would need to revise the plans in a manner that it meets the spatial requirements of a fifty-five-acre property cultivating inside of a greenhouse. So what you're approving today is essentially a, a project that'll be in transition for however long she is needing to convert from outdoor to greenhouse cultivation. And so just to be clear about that, property is zoned ag. It does have high-value farmland on the property. It had been issued early activation, I believe, in May of twenty twenty. I'm not sure I noted that, and I can get the date if it's needed. The property is fairly steep. It's surrounded by ag uses to the south and, I believe, to the west. I'm looking at the aerial photo, page five. The area is characterized by ag land and by APZ-zoned land, so there are Williamson Act contract properties in the vicinity, in particular to the property to the south and west beyond Highway one seventy-five. Because the property is direct access to one seventy-five, we were able to make a finding that it wouldn't adversely affect any established ag uses from a transportation standpoint, excuse me. Obviously, transitioning into greenhouses would further lessen the potential impacts that are associated with, primarily with the neighboring ag uses, because they use stronger chemicals than the cultivators are allowed to use. Cultivators have to meet very tight standards on the quality of their product. So I've already discussed the specifics of this project. I can go over them again if the planning commission wants me to. It is of record as of the prior hearing date. I believe it was December fifteenth, but I'm not a hundred percent positive of when it was brought to the planning commission before, and I should have noted that in the staff report, and I did not. January fourteenth, thank you. There isn't anything material other than ordinance number thirty-one oh three that's changed between January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, public hearing date, and today's public hearing date. The January fourteenth hearing date is of record. The staff report is self-explanatory in terms of compliance with the various aspects of the general plan, the area plan, and the zoning ordinance chapters that apply, primarily Article twenty-seven, subsection AT, and Article seven, I believe, the agricultural zone. Let me confirm that article. Article five, which discusses uses are permitted in the agricultural zone. And actually, Article twenty-seven is the one that allows cannabis cultivation in the ag zone. So that would be in table B, within Article twenty-seven, subsection, and I don't remember the subsection, table B of Article twenty-seven. Nine findings need to be made in order to approve commercial cannabis. I described those nine requirements during the prior planning commission hearing. I would like to just touch on them briefly. That the established maintenance or operation of the use applied for will not be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, welfare of persons residing or working in the vicinity, I'm paraphrasing. Number two, that the site for the project is adequate size, shape, location, and physical characteristics to accommodate the type of use and level of development proposed. Number three, that streets, highways, pedestrian facilities are reasonably adequate. Number four, adequate public and private services, including but not limited to fire, water, sewage, and police protection. Number five, the project is in conformance of the applicable provisions and policies of this code, general plan, and any other approved zoning or land use plans that apply. In this case, the Kelseyville area plan is actually applicable. And finally, that no violations of chapters five, seventeen, twenty-one, twenty-three, or twenty-six of the Lake County Code exist on the property. There are three other findings that are found in Article twenty-seven of the Code that have to be met. The proposal complies with all development standards described in section one I. We found that it does. It's fully compliant with all applicable development standards. Number two, the applicant is qualified to make the application. Crystal Keasy is the applicant. She has successfully passed live scan. She's been cleared through the background check through Lake County Sheriff's Department. And finally, the application complies with qualifications for a use permit described in section one point II, sub I, and we found that it does. She provided us with all the studies and water analyses, all the documentation that is typically associated with a successful application for cannabis cultivation in Lake County. So we're recommending that the planning commission adopt mitigated negative declaration IS nineteen dash fourteen, with the findings listed in the staff report, and approve use permit nineteen oh eight, with the findings that are listed on page fifteen of the staff report, with one notable exception. We need to have a new condition added that addresses the implementation of ordinance thirty-one oh three, and that would be new condition number A thirty-three. The wording of that condition, as I'm recommending it, would be, this permit shall not have force or effect until May twentieth, twenty twenty-one, following completion of the adoption of the Lake County Ordinance number thirty-one oh three. Nicole, I may need your help on this next part. Revocation of ordinance number thirty-one oh three will cause revocation of this use permit. If any action is taken between today's date-
Eric? If I may give you the language that was provided yesterday, would you rather I read that?
Sure.
Okay. The language that counsel provided was, this permit shall have no force or effect until the effective date of ordinance thirty-one oh three, date of May twenty twenty-one, at which point this permit shall be fully effective. Should ordinance thirty-one oh three not become effective on May twenty twenty-one, this permit shall be void. Should permitting begin any permitted work prior to the effective date of this permit, the permit shall be subject to immediate revocation.
Thank you. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Eric, just real quick, Ms. Keasy, are you familiar with this language that was just discussed? Okay. Thank you.
Eric, if I may, one more time. If you could specifically address how the transition activities were evaluated in your analysis, especially under CEQA?
Transition activities pertaining to the newly adopted ordinance?
Yes.
They have not been addressed. I don't know what the transition activities look like. Sure. They have not been addressed. I don't know what the transition activities are going to look like. It's going to require probably a revision to the site plan. It may require a revised CEQA analysis, and if that's true, then it would require yet another public hearing with the modified site layout. So today, you would essentially be approving what could be a three-year permit, given ordinance number thirty-one oh three. I've worked pretty closely with Ms. Kezey, and she is very diligent about getting updated documents to us in a timely manner. I don't have a lot of concerns that we're going to get the revised plans timely, and so the condition probably, I'm guessing, would need to have a three-year sunset in it unless the ordinance already contains that, which I think it actually does now that I mention it.
And it covers, yeah.
Thank you, Eric.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Eric?
I don't have any questions. I, when the, when this item was actually on the agenda back in January, I did do a visit to the site, and it's laid out very nicely. You can't really see it from the road. It's a really, really beautiful piece of property, very much so. That's it.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a concern with this permit approving activities that have not been analyzed under CEQA. CEQA does not allow for approval of projects prior to a CEQA analysis, so I would like staff to at least go over what specifically, what activities specifically are being approved under this permit, because I don't recommend an open-ended permit when it comes to CEQA analysis.
Okay, thank you.
And this is a, this is analysis that would be triggered because of 3103?
The way I understood it, based on Eric's description, was the, this particular permit that you're approving today is essentially approving activities that would be brought back to the, to planning over the course of three years, and if those haven't been analyzed, then CEQA hasn't been satisfied. Those activities haven't been analyzed.
That's actually not what I'm saying at all.
Okay, then if you could clarify, that would be great.
Sure. What I'm saying is that the applicant is going to need to amend the scope of the project in order to comply with 3103. It's very likely that a new CEQA analysis is going to have to be undertaken. It's probable that a modification, at the very least, will be required on this application. It may well need to come back to the Planning Commission in its revised iteration at some point in time. Because of the sunset clause within 3103, there is a limited duration to the outdoor aspect of this permit. So yes, there would have to be a transition. It's really up to the applicant to get staff. The modified site plans and whatever else needs to be modified might require less water. Maybe it's going to take less water. We'll need to know how tall the buildings are going to be that are greenhouse structures. She's proposing hoop houses. Question in my mind is whether or not the elected officials will even allow them. I think they indicated that they would as a transitional measure, but it would still consider the cultivation areas to be outdoors because of the nature of the hoop houses, which would have to be removed at the end of the growing season each year. So whether hoop houses would change the complexion of what's being brought before you today, I really don't know. I don't think so, because they're temporary structures. But that, you know, there are a couple of unknowns that are tied to this, mainly because of 3103 and the newness of the ordinance and the requirements that are within 3103 that require change. So Ms. Kezey has been continued once from January, which is probably the only way it could have gone, and the Planning Commission has the ability to continue it yet again, or you can make a decision to approve it subject to condition number A33 that Nicole read the wording of, with the understanding that Ms. Kezey's got a limited duration use permit due to 3103. So whether that's a viable solution or not, I think it is, but I haven't encountered this before, so I'm kind of a little bit at a loss as far as how to advise the Planning Commission on it.
Thank you, Eric. Yeah, I mean, I'm curious. This is the first one we're dealing with. I thought the transition would be, give you the three years, so I assume that would not be CEQA. I thought after the three years, it'd be a completely different development that would have to be. So I don't really see it as an open-ended permit, because in three years, we're going to shut her down unless she has gone through the whole process with a whole new CEQA with her building plans. So that's how I understood it. So I believe today would be the day to say, yes, you can continue your process. You've got three years under the new, I don't know if it's an ordinance or how it was put in, but that, you know, she can get going on this. So I, I think it's interesting you put temporary structures there, too. So I don't think that that would change anything there. It's just a temporary structure. But again, I mean, I would defer.
Mr. Chair, my, my understanding of the way the ordinance works is that there have been actions that have been applied for under an earlier, an earlier permit application. And Eric said that this had, this, this permit had been brought to the commission earlier under that application, that those were the items that were being considered today as being approved under the ordinance 3103, and that under that ordinance, the applicant has, within a certain timeframe, the requirement to meet the applicable zoning ordinance with an updated application, which would also be subject to CEQA and the zoning analysis and all of that. But what we're approving today, my understanding, is what was brought to you under the original application. Is that correct, Eric?
Subject to 3103, that's correct.
Okay, so when you say subject to 3103, what changes in the original application under 3103 that would be different here that we're asking the Planning Commission to approve?
Well, several things. First of all, the original application would have allowed a 10-year approval window, so that would change. This would not be a 10-year approval window in its current iteration. It would have to be amended, which would likely be a new application, whether it's a mod or a brand-new use permit. You know, that would be up to the director's discretion in terms of overall impact. It changes the nature of the project. I'm assuming that when it comes back to the Planning Commission in some iteration, it may actually expand the approval time duration by an additional three years if she has three years to make her application for the revised plans, have staff review them, have staff undertake a second CEQA evaluation based on the changes that are made, bring it back to the Planning Commission, and it would essentially be a brand-new approval date in its proposed iteration of being inside of greenhouses.
Is Scott DeLeon available right now, so I'll ask a question?
He was feeling the effects of a COVID shot. He had to go home.
What I hear both of you saying, Eric and Nicole, is either way, this comes back to the Planning Commission.
What I'm trying to do is clarify exactly what you're approving today, so that the commission and the applicant are both clear on what this permit allows to be done without, without returning to the Planning Commission. Actions in general, the rules like CEQA, for example, would govern, would be triggered under other, under other projects and other applications and so on, and that would, that would create obligations on behalf of the applicant to come back. My concern is that we're not making confusion in this record to where there are certain activities that would otherwise be required to come back that are assumed to be part of this particular approval today. So I just wanted staff to clarify what it is you are actually approving today in light of the 3103 ordinance, which is, is, in my understanding, simply a timeframe by which applicants must, or permutees, permit holders, must come back to the commission with changes to meet the changed ordinance, so that their project meets the changes in the ordinance. But that what we're approving today, my understanding, is the project application that was originally put in, and I was just asking to make sure that my understanding was correct.
With the changes that Eric had mentioned. It's that, it's that application, but with the changes Eric has mentioned today. You were asking him what was different about today versus January.
Right. What it is you are approving today, and if that is different from what was presented in the last time this project was brought forward, because he had said that this project had been brought before you, and he could go through it again if you like, but it largely remains the same. So my question was, is it that plus whatever changes he's recommending now, and if those changes had been included in this, in the analysis that is being presented to you today? If they were not, then my concern would be that if it were a CEQA requirement, that the CEQA would not be satisfied, and you could not approve the permit if that's the case.
Well, then we should have moved to continue in the first place. I mean, I, I think you're both right. I, I get to say that.
Well, no, I'm, I'm not providing an analysis of, of the actual permit itself. That's staff's responsibility. I'm, I'm asking staff to be clear as to that that is the case, so that you are clear when you're making your decision with the evidence in front of it.
Oh, I appreciate that, Nicole. No, that's always helpful. I personally understand what you said, and I believe that Eric has added additional content and clarity to what this report today is about, and I'm comfortable moving forward. It sounds to me like that might be the fairest thing to do to a very patient applicant, and it would come back to the commission. And so this is not our last pass at it, so to speak.
And if I may, my understanding as well, what we're voting on today, and then also including, you know, maybe some verbiage to the motion as amended here today with the reference to 3103, is that something that we, that we need to add to the, to the motion?
Well, I think we did. I think we added Nicole's verbiage for new condition number A33.
And keeping, yeah, keeping in mind that this, this application itself, that if you were to approve it today, would not be effective until 30 days from the adoption of the ordinance that is, that is, it's relying on.
Correct. So that, and we're talking 5/20/2021?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
Do we have any other questions for Eric? Now, does the applicant wish to provide us with some information or comments?
Mr. Chair, she is in chambers, and I believe she's going to approach the podium. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please be sure to state your first and last name.
Crystal Kezey. Good afternoon, staff and commissioners. Nice to see you again. I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak again today. Since our first Planning Commission hearing on January 14th...
Crystal, just a moment, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. Since our first Planning Commission hearing on January 14th, I've undergone a seven-hour surgery for breast cancer, and I'm currently in treatment for my disease. Concurrently with my cancer treatment, I've actively participated in the development of ordinance amendment 3103 with the Board of Supervisors actively to, that enables our project to move forward today and also enables several other projects, I believe there are other five other ones, to move forward who are similarly situated in the flux of the changing regulations in the county. I wanted to note that the Board of Supervisors unanimously approved that amendment in both the first and second reading. To have to carry the proverbial football of advocacy for my project while concurrently battling, battling breast cancer has been challenging, to say the least, and I'm grateful just to be here. And I wanted to thank the board and staff for working so diligently to help us get our project that we really believe in across the finish line in whatever iteration that we can that conforms with what the community wants. And so I just wanted to say thank you to everyone, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant?
I do not.
I do not either.
No questions?
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and open a public comment to anybody in the chambers first, and then we'll proceed to the Zoom room. If anybody wishing to speak on this item in the chambers?
Oh, I apologize. There's no one who wishes to speak on this item, just the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake, do we have any hands in the Zoom room, please?
No, we don't have any hands up in the Zoom room.
Okay, thank you, Kerian. With no comment, we'll close public comments and bring it back to the commission for any additional comments or action.
Just to be clear, on the sample motions that I was provided, do I need to add any verbiage for the A3330 or the 3103? That's what I thought. Okay.
Sorry. No, just as amended, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure. That being said, if no one has anything further to say on this item, I'm prepared to make a motion.
I don't have anything, so please entertain your motion.
I move that the Planning Commission find that the initial study IS 19-14, applied for by Golden State Herb on property located at 8550 Highway 175 Kelseyville and further described as APN 011-055-06, will not have a significant effect on the environment, and therefore, a mitigated negative declaration shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated April 22nd, 2021, and as amended here today.
All right, second up.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
I move that the Planning Commission find that the use permit UP 19-08, applied for by Golden State Herb on property located at 8550 Highway 175 Kelseyville and further described as APN 011-055-06, does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 of the Lake County zoning ordinance, and the major use permit be granted, subject to the conditions and the findings listed in the staff report dated April 22nd, 2021, and as amended here today.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion, so, Kerian. Motion, so, Kerian.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to note the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the Planning Commission, appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. Appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 p.m. on or before the seventh calendar day of final commission's final determination.
Best of luck with your treatment and your recovery.
I was just going to say, we'll definitely keep you in our thoughts and prayers, and stay strong. Thank you.
Okay, we'll take up our item number seven, public hearing. Applicant owner, Vigro LLC, Zerina Archikova, proposed project 15, A-type 3B mixed light commercial cannabis cultivation licenses, 1 1A-type 1ST specialty cottage greenhouse license, and 1A-type 13 self-distribution license. The applicant is proposing 30 90 by 125 greenhouses, 190 by 112 greenhouse, 490 by 125 nursery greenhouse, 450 by 100 feet greenhouse drying buildings, 11200 square foot shed, 4 2500 gallon water tanks, 1 six-foot tall galvanized woven wire fence covered, covered with privacy mesh to screen the greenhouse public view. Total proposed cultivation area is 4,405 square feet, roughly nine acres. Location is 16750 Harrington Road, Middletown, California, cultivation site, 17610 Sandy Road, Middletown, and 19678 Stinson Road, Middletown, consisting of 300 plus, 309 plus acres, APN 013-060... APN zero one three dash zero six zero dash four zero cultivation site, zero one three dash zero one four dash zero three. And zero one three dash zero one four dash eleven. An environmental evaluation mitigated negative declaration IS twenty dash twenty five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eric Porter, Associate Planner, Lake County. As the chairman indicated, this is a request to allow fifteen A type three B medium mixed light. Commercial licenses and one A type one C specialty cottage license. All the cultivation would occur inside of greenhouses. They are proposing thirty five greenhouses and several drying buildings in addition to several sheds. They're actually also requesting approval for an A type thirteen self distribution license. Property is in a pastoral setting. The general vicinity is heavily treed. And entering the site, and the reason I mention this is relevant, there was some concern about visual impacts. And just on an aside, this project has generated a lot of interest from primarily from neighbors, most of whom live in Hidden Valley Lake. At last count, I think we had eighty people voicing concern over the project. I've got a letter that I green cheated that I've given to the commissioners from a law firm in opposition to the project and so it's. Public record that we actually hand hand replied to each of the people who submitted comments. And I believe that happened ten days ago. All were notified of the Zoom meeting. I'm guessing we have a lot of people that want to contribute testimony here, so I'll try to be brief with my presentation. Applicant has undergone all the various seminal requirements that an application has to. Abide by in order for us to review their project. They provided an archaeological study. They provided a biological assessment. The meets occur in terms of our biological studies. They provided a water analysis. They actually drilled a second well when Andrew Williams and I were visiting the site, which I believe occurred on March twenty fifth. The well was in the process of being drilled at that time. I got the well results this week. I have not incorporated those into the staff report. However, the existing well on the site produced a hundred and six gallons per minute, which is regarded as a high producing well and that was dated back in nineteen ninety seven. Whether it still generates that degree of water, we don't have a more current test on that particular well, so we had to go by the nineteen ninety seven well test. Applicants verbally consented to having a five thousand gallon metal water tank adapted with fire department connection hoses. The site is heavily treed like I mentioned before. It the location of the greenhouses is very tough to view from Hidden Valley Lake. It is visible from two houses that are positioned above the We Grow property. The We Grow property is quite large. It's three hundred and nine combined acres consisting of three parcels. They are only cultivating on the northern portion of the upper parcel. They would have twenty employees per day and estimated forty to eighty average daily trips are anticipated following construction. Construction. Will likely take between two and four months, given the number of structures that would be present on the site. We evaluated the road for forty two ninety and forty two ninety one compliance. There are some minor changes that need to occur in order to make that internal driveway compliant. Including widening the entry gate, installing an ox box on the gate and. Applying gravel base to the internal driveway in order to meet the width of twenty feet. They have not applied for a grading permit. However, they're only proposing to move approximately a hundred and fifty cubic yards of dirt. Which is quite a bit less than the five hundred cubic yard threshold. That would trigger a grading permit. You're allowed to move five hundred or less cubic yards with a building permit. And they would have to get building permits for all of the construction that they're proposing. They would need to remove twenty to thirty native oak trees that are. Probably more than five inches in diameter. They provided a tree replacement plan, but they gave it to us. After the staff report had been circulated, so I have not had a chance to evaluate the tree replacement plan. However, what I have done is I've put a requirement in the conditions of approval for a three to one. Replacement based on the removal of each oak tree that's over five inches in diameter measured at four and a half feet above grade. So we've actually required more. The placement of the trees would be around the perimeter of the greenhouse cultivation area. Part of the purpose of that is to further conceal the greenhouses, although from what I could see. The greenhouse is going to be very tough to see from Hidden Valley Lake because of where they are. Because of the terrain and because of the heavy tree coverage around the property. So. We've evaluated the project for compliance with subsection twenty seven A T. It's a split zone property. We evaluated it for compliance with the R R rural residential and R L rural land zoning districts. Both of which allow commercial cannabis cultivation. Subject to a use permit review and approval. We've evaluated against the general plan. There are some goals and policies that actually apply to this one and they're within the staff report. I won't read them. We've evaluated it for compliance with the Middletown area plan and there are some economic policies that apply. This will employ twenty people at peak cultivation season. And again, the findings that we had to meet are in the staff report given to the planning commission and available to the public. Excuse me. And lastly, we've reviewed it against the applicable development standards found in article twenty seven subsection A T. Minimum lat size setback from property line setback from offsite residences. The nearest residence according to Google Earth and according to our mapping program is located about eleven hundred feet to the north of the cultivation area. Just for the record. Maximum canopy area we evaluated. General requirements. Are found also in subsection A T of the Lake County zoning ordinance, article twenty seven. We conducted a sequel review. It was sent to the state clearinghouse on February seventeenth. And the review period ended on March twenty seventh, so the state had. A little over a month to distribute it to different state agencies who had the ability to provide comments. There was some opposition to the project from the Redwood Valley Pomont tribe. Who had objections about potential water. I want to say competition with other neighboring users that would use the same aquifer. We haven't seen any evidence that the aquifer is weak in that location. However, we don't have a way of doing an aquifer adequacy test either. Or at least if we do, I haven't been made aware of it. The applicant has met with Middletown Rancheria who indicated that the site was within their tribal ancestral boundaries. I spoke with their consultant last week. He had met with the tribe and was in the process of inking a contract with the tribe. So there is cooperation on the part of the cultivator with the Middletown Rancheria tribe. In order to have representation on site for the site disturbance, which would occupy a significant area. During the sequel review, there are some things that we found could be potential impacts that are associated. Those apply to aesthetics, primarily the greenhouses, air quality with construction dust disturbance. Biological resources. There were no map sensitive species on the site, but we do have recommended. Mitigation measures for biological impacts, just in case any are discovered. I touched on the cultural, geologic, historical and tribal resource concerns that we had. Energy resources. This is going to use a lot of on grid power. There is a condition. Within the conditions of approval that. I better confirm that. I'm gonna hold off on commenting on that. Hydrology resources. We had some concerns about the water usage. They've since drilled that second well, which will provide a secondary water source. Noise is fairly typical during construction, so we put limits on the amount of noise that could be generated. And potentially transportation, primarily based on the fact that they have to go through a residential area. To get to the site and the road on the site at present is not Cal Fire compliant, but it could be made Cal Fire compliant fairly easily. I'm not going to get into the specific mitigation measures. I've told you what categories. I believe could be adversely impacted and what the mitigation measure. Measures proposed would would be inside of the conditions of approval. Lastly, we have nine findings that have to be made for approval of any major use permit. Number one, the establishment, maintenance or operation of the use applied for will not, under the circumstances. Of the particular case be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort and general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood. Of such proposed use or be detrimental to property and improvements in the neighborhood or the general welfare of the county. Number two, that the site for the project is adequate in size, shape, location and physical characteristics to accommodate the type of use and level of development proposed. Number three, streets, highways and pedestrian facilities are reasonably adequate to safely accommodate the proposed use. Number four, that there are specific public or private services, including but not limited to. Fire protection, water supply, sewage disposal, police protection to serve the project. Number five. That the project is in conformance of applicable provisions and policies of this code, the general plan and the Middletown area plan. I'm paraphrasing now. And number six, and no violations of chapters five, seventeen, twenty one, twenty three or twenty six of the Lake County code currently exist on the property. I emphasize currently because there had been some violations. We extensively worked with other agencies to clear the violations up. I contacted our code enforcement. I contacted the sheriff's department and I contacted. I think that was it. Our code enforcement manager was the one who was acting as the point of contact for other agencies who had been involved with. Some illegal activity that had been occurring on the property. And before I brought this before you, I wanted to make sure that everything had been satisfactorily cleared up. And what I was told by our code enforcement manager is that all the violations that had been on the site have been taken care of. When I went out to the site with the code enforcement manager on, I believe, March twenty fifth. We saw nothing that even remotely looked like it was a violation. So it was a clean site. There were some well drillers out there to drill the second well. We didn't see any reason for. Any kind of concern regarding subsection six of section fifty one point four, which are violations on the property. And then lastly, the three portions of chapter article twenty seven or other that have to be met are the proposal complies with all the development standards described. In chapter twenty one, article twenty seven, subsection one I. Number two, that the applicant is qualified to make the application. And number three, the application complies with the qualifications for a permit described in chapter twenty one, article twenty seven, subsection one point I I sub I. So after a very comprehensive review and after reviewing all of the comments that we received from the many people who were concerned about this project. I could not find a reason to recommend anything other than approval. And so therefore I'm recommending that this application be approved subject to. Adoption of mitigated negative declaration number IS twenty dash twenty five. And that major use permit U P twenty dash twenty two be approved with the findings that are described within the staff report dated April twenty second, twenty twenty one. And so with that, I know there's a lot of public who want to comment on this. I'm gonna wrap up my portion of it. And I'm prepared to answer questions if any need to be answered.
Thank you, Eric. Um, I do have. I do.
Go ahead, please.
Go ahead. Sorry, Mr.
No, I was just gonna ask if anybody had any comments for Eric, questions.
Any other commissioners have anything to ask him before we?
Go right ahead. I have a question for Eric too.
Okay. Eric, I just want to be clear. According to the map where the actual cultivation site is. In reference to where the existing building is on the map, it's it's a lot further down on the parcel, correct?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, I would put it at probably three hundred feet. The northern end of the cultivation area is about three hundred feet, I think, from the building.
Yeah.
And I'm going by memory, which is never a good idea in my case.
I I understand. I had I had the opportunity just to do a quick. Site visit earlier this week and I was very pleased on the way that off of the main road, Spruce Grove Road, I believe it is where Harrington actually meets it. You know, there there wasn't hardly any neighbors. I was very surprised on where the where the actual access road to that was. But I do understand the concern of the surrounding community and the visual impact it might have. So I'm curious to to see what the public has to say.
Well, just as a point of clarification, I actually did a measurement on Google Earth and on. The G I S mapping tools that we have and the boundary, the outer boundary of Hidden Valley Lake is about a thousand feet. I should say the cultivation site is about a thousand feet outside of the thousand foot setback. So from what I could tell, the cultivation area is set back from the very first lots in Hidden Valley Lake by about a half a mile.
Thank you, Eric.
Eric, you mentioned that you were reluctant to talk about a condition regarding amperage, energy usage. But on page four of conditions is something that says specifically that's something that has to be explained to the county adequately and if. P G and E and traditional sources are not available, solar is a consideration, but under no circumstances could a generator be a substitute.
Right.
I think that's relevant and I'm I did want to bring that for the record.
It is relevant, absolutely. Yeah, I couldn't remember how the condition was worded. I wanted to give the cultivator an opportunity to come up with an alternative energy solution. And I wanted to make it clear that generators were not okay.
Yep, thank you for that.
Could be a noise concern.
And I'm a Hidden Valley resident and I I know the area under discussion well. And one can split hairs between whether two homes are affected by the viewscape or thirteen. I've seen both numbers. I do believe it's it is visible. Rim Rock Rim Ranch Ranch Rock Road is a is a point and also Raven Hill Park. So I may I may have a request for eight foot fence elevations in some areas.
Well, I think I would support that eight foot fence because when I went there, I did not know the area. It did not come up on Apple Maps. So I went to one of the other parcels at the bottom end, which I think would be Sandy or Stinson. I actually asked a neighbor because one of those parcels and he said, no, it's gonna be up on a hill. So I was trying to get a lesson of, you know, where that was. Because I was concerned if it was gonna be going, you know, really through a neighborhood. And it seems like, as I'm understanding, that's the Rancheria. Is that correct?
The Ranchos.
Ranchos, okay, so that's the Ranchos. And so that it is not going to be going through the Hidden Valley area or gate, so that would not deal with that HOA. And so I just wanted to confirm that because I do not know the area. So I think I don't have any questions of Eric, except that I am curious to see power concerns, obviously. And it's been brought up in other meetings before, you know, I don't I don't think that. I mean, that might be something that would have to be dealt with at some point in time.
Okay, thank you. Does Commissioner Chavez have any questions or comments? If not, then we can.
No questions are coming.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant available to answer questions?
Mr. Chair, I do believe. He might be doing it via Zoom.
Jake? I believe the consultant or one of that's not. Oh, okay, sorry. I believe the consultant, or, or one of, that's not, oh, okay, sorry.
Can you confirm the name of the applicant for me, please?
Last name Ochikova.
Ah, Zarina?
Yeah, Zarina Ochikova is the uh, o- owner of the property. Uh, the consultant is Sufian Hamouda. Uh, Lake County Planning Consultants.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Sufian.
Hi, this is Sufian Hamouda. Uh, Zarina is in here as well, and or she is on the Zoom.
Also uh, given her permission to speak as well, so both of you are now set.
Good afternoon, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Uh, uh, hello, planning commissioners and community members, uh, my name is Zarina Ochikova.
Uh, real quick, sorry, uh, Zarina there, uh, we're getting some feedback from your line.
Okay, lower, okay, let me just lower a little bit the volume.
Yeah.
Is this better?
That's better, thank you.
Okay, awesome, okay, hello, everybody, um, hello, planning commissioners and community members. My name is Zarina Ochikova, and I'm the owner of We Grow LLC. I want to first start out by thanking you all for taking the time today to listen to my project. I want to also thank our planner, Eric Porter, for all the work has done in processing this application. I do understand that this project has had a lot of public comments, and my consultants, Sufian Hamouda, and I have done our best to read through each one. As you all know, a single paragraph project description by itself, it's unable to give the full detail of the project, which is why we understand the concern of our community members have voiced. Only by reviewing the many documents we provided during this permit process, it's someone able to see that we have considered all of these concerns in great detail. I've submitted an e-comment with an attachment that goes over the general topics voiced by my neighbors and how we plan to mitigate those concerns. As I outlined in the letter a couple of times, this project will implement any mitigation measurements that you all deem necessary today. A business cannot run without the support of its community, and I look forward to operating my business as a member of that community. The attached letter in the e-comment, it's a bit long, but it does addresses the many comments we read through. So, planning commissioners, if you have not had the chance to read through it, I would like to offer that it's read on record. It is four pages of an outline in a bullet format for each topic of a concern. So either Sufian or I can read through it, or if you would like, it can be read at the end of the public comments, whichever it's best.
I'm familiar with the letter.
I have also looked at the letter as well.
I have, excuse me, I have as well, I, I don't know if they just want it to be read into the record just for
I, this is Sufian Hamouda, I'd be happy to quickly go through it if, uh, if it could be pulled up, and then I could read along with it, or it's up to you guys.
The fact that it's in e-comment form makes it part of the record. And uh, it's, it's a longish day, four, four pages could be a while, I don't
For sure.
Not sure that's necessary.
Okay.
One commissioner speaking.
I am in agreement with that statement, John, thank you.
Sufian, you can go ahead and continue if you'd like.
Oh, I have, I have nothing else at this time, I think uh, you know, Zarina has taken into consideration all of these while planning. Um, the, the letter again is lengthy, but we do outline in every portion of it um, all of the mitigation measures that uh, are needed, or that we believe are needed. Uh, as Zarina outlined, we, we'd be happy to include any additional mitigation measures that you guys seem, uh, deem fit today.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you, we have no, uh, go ahead.
I, I just had some questions for the applicant before we went to a public comment.
Okay.
Um, first of all, regarding uh, the water usage plan, was there a reason that the replacement trees and the water involved for the lifetime of the project for those was not included? I'm, it sounds like we're talking between sixty and ninety trees. And it's always nice to see a complete application in that regard. And then I'm concerned why you've gone to great pains to respond to so many concerns, but the the monthly, the, the well report is dated March nineteen ninety-seven, and it certainly would seem easy enough to get a more recent report, and barring that, I would like to have monthly well reports um, added as a condition if we can't get a more updated well report.
For sure, so I can, I can speak to uh, those responses. So, uh, the first in regards to the uh, biological or the tree plan, um, the second site visit had to be done during uh, the springtime survey. So it is actually just recently done, um, that's why, that's the late nature of it. Um, and then in regards to the wells, there are two well permits, um, well reports, excuse me, that were submitted. Um, and they do show the gallons per minute, one being eight gallons per minute with a seventy-two percent recharge rate, and the second one being a forty gallons per minute with a ninety-eight percent recharge rate within thirty minutes. So um, we'd be, obviously the conditions do require, um, the wells have two meters on it, um, as you guys know, and so those meters uh, could be, you know, given to the county, uh, shorter than the annual requirement, um, if that needs to be done on a monthly basis. Uh, again, the one meter does show the well depth at a continuous reading twenty-four hours a day, every single day, and the other one shows the gallons per minute output uh, for cannabis itself. So if that is a condition that needs to be included, um, those well meters could be provided at a more regular basis than annually.
I would appreciate that. And um, I was happy to see in the letter you did put out yesterday that you're willing to work with the property owners on paying annual, paying annual improvements for Tinellin and Jaclyn Roads.
That is correct, I, I am unaware of um, you know, the community itself. However, uh, we do have people that can work with them, um, in order for that to, to happen, I, again, I'm unfamiliar with the area itself specifically, but if there are, or if there is a community fund, um, we'd be more than happy to pay um, our share portion of it because it will be access.
And just one other thing, I don't want to monopolize the time here, but in your letter, which I found was welcome, uh, you didn't respond as directly to concerns about certain violations. You said something very carefully worded about, at no time has anyone on my team been part of a cannabis violation or felony. But I believe there's been enormous amount of community concern about stolen or unauthorized heavy equipment that was brought onto the property for some activity, and that that involved CHP getting involved and a case number being created. That's not a cannabis violation, but it would have been helpful if you had been more forthcoming about that. Is there something you could tell us about that?
Yes, I have reached out to CHP numerous times. Um, the property was purchased in early of twenty twenty. Um, and there is no residence on site there. None of Zarina's team has been on site actively, um, as there's nothing on the property. Um, I have contacted CHP numerous times, I actually provided those to uh, both Eric Porter and Aunt Williams. Um, CHP in Lakeport, or, excuse me, Clear Lake, I believe. And there is nothing pertaining back to the applicant or the property itself that we have any issue to clear up, and so um, that was followed up initially in the beginning of twenty twenty, and I also followed up recently here in twenty twenty-one. There is nothing that they are giving more information on to us, um, in regards to the property, and again, related to the individual specifically, there's been nothing.
In terms of the information from the community, the stolen heavy equipment was in, was observed in February of twenty twenty, which was after the property was purchased, I believe, by the applicant.
Correct.
Um, and there's reports of some kind of a felony violation. Why was so, why was stolen heavy, heavy equipment on the property at a time when the applicant was the owner?
Yep, a- again, as I mentioned, there, she was not at the property site. Uh, it was in transition, I believe that's within the first month of the property being purchased. And uh, there was no indication of, you know, CHP has not given any information to us or to Zarina as to what occurred. Uh, nothing is being related back to the property itself or the cultivation or Zarina's team. So we are, we are unsure of that situation, to be completely honest with you. We've done as much as we have, as much as we could to reach out to um, you know, reach compliance, um, and that is all we have heard back in multiple forms, which Eric outlined it.
Thank you.
So I guess this could go out to Sufian or to Eric. So there was no cannabis violations at any point in time there, in terms of if it wasn't their team or anything like that. I did read one of those letters saying that there was helicopters or SWAT, and so I'm assuming that might be for the stolen heavy equipment, but at no point in time were any plants cut down or anything like that? This was not an early activated project?
No, they didn't qualify for early activation last year. And I talked to Sufian in uh, August or September, and he indicated that the growing season had passed. Uh, they were no longer going to request it for twenty twenty.
Okay.
Um, regarding illegal cannabis cultivation on site, I'm not aware of any that's occurred in twenty twenty.
Great.
So if it did, I haven't observed it, and I haven't been notified that it was actually happening.
If I may also, oh, sorry, Eric.
No, go ahead.
Um, I did address that in the letter, so that, that is something that did come up um, early on and quite often within the review process. The, there, there was illegal cultivation on the property south of the current project property. Um, as I do outline that, CDFW has flown in and cut that down multiple times. On aerial imagery, you can, you can very clearly see that it is on the project parcel to the south. Um, at no point in time, my client or a previous uh, property owner has cultivated on any of the three parcels um, that are being questioned today.
Okay, and so that is not at the proposed site, then I assume, so.
Correct, yes, uh, CDFW also performed their site visit on July twenty-eighth, in which they issued the uh, LSA, so.
Great, thank you.
Is there any additional questions for applicant or the consultant?
No questions.
I don't have any questions at this time.
I guess I do have one more, Mr. Chair, I apologize. And that is uh, current and past generator use onsite?
Sorry, I, I don't believe I heard you there.
Sufian, um, complaints about um, generator noise at all hours? Um, could you characterize current or ongoing uh, generator work, use on the property?
There are no generators, um, again, as Eric outlined, there, there has been uh, well drilling recently. Um, the, the structure that is currently existing onsite is a barn. Uh, to my knowledge, it does not have a generator, and it is one hundred percent not being used within the proposed project, so uh, no, there would be no generators.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and I need to uh, disclose that I have to leave at two o'clock for an appointment at two thirty. Um, I will be here for the remainder, uh, the next fifteen minutes, so I just want to, before I open public comment, to make the commissioner aware of that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Um, I have no problem taking over when you leave.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and uh, open it up for a public comment, if we have anybody in the chambers. I wish to speak on this item before we proceed to the Zoom room.
We have no one in the chambers.
Okay, let's go ahead and proceed to the Zoom room for a public comment.
All right, the first hand I have up here is from, um, uh, well, I have the two hands up from the um, the applicant and uh, Sufian, uh, so I'm going to skip over those two because I think they've been talking. Uh, the first hand up I have up here is from Zippy. Okay, so uh, Zippy is using an older, I think you have permission to unmute now, Zippy? I've also sent you a unmute request. Hello, Zippy, are you there? I'm hearing noise from your mic.
Okay, can we proceed to the next comment and come back to Zippy if they're able to unmute their mic?
All right, I've muted Zippy, and I will go on to the next name I have here, as I have Scott Nagelson. I have given you permission to speak, and it looks like you're muted, will you please confirm your first and last name?
Uh, good afternoon, and thank you for having me, my name is Scott Nagelson. Uh, my wife and I own um, property at two oh three nine five Vineyard Drive, which is on the eastern boundary of the proposed project, and I am speaking in opposition to the project. Um, I have a number of concerns that I can't cover all of them in three minutes, but I'll try to hit the high points. Uh, number one is water. It seems kind of strange that this project would be approved based on a nineteen ninety-seven well study. Uh, and I under, have listened to the commentary here, but I am also aware that the county has issued permits for five new wells. Those of us that rely on wells in the area are very concerned about the impact on the aquifer and the impact on our water supply. Um, access, Harrington Road is nothing more than a, basically a dirt driveway. And uh, access is not off of Spruce Grade Road. Uh, it's uh, Spruce Grade Road into a subdivision that um, uh, is residential. And a forty to eighty vehicle trips a day is going to have a tremendous impact on, on that subdivision. Uh, from a visual standpoint, um, I can see the barn on this property from my land, and uh, I suspect that I will be able to see these uh, these greenhouses as well. Um, the history of illegal activity on there has already been covered, I'm still concerned about, about that. It seems odd that the property owner wouldn't know what was going on, um, thirty days after acquiring the property. And then last is, uh, it seems that the biological uh, report was uh, was pretty cursory and inadequate. Uh, I don't think it meets the requirements of CECL, there was, for one thing, there was no seasonal survey done. Uh, so I would uh, like to urge this commission to uh, to disapprove this project. It's uh, well out of scale for the uh, area that it's being uh, proposed for. Uh, irregardless of whether it could be seen from Hidden Valley or not, there are many others of us that will uh, will have to uh, to look at it or hear of, of it. Um, there is an illegal grow, um, that's going on, that has been resurrected just to the south of this project. I understand it's on a different parcel, um, but um, you know, that's got to have some impact on uh, on this uh, project as well. So I want to also thank Mr. Porter for his um, assistance in getting information on this, um, staff has been very responsive. Thank you, I'll turn my time back.
Thank you. To the next hand, please.
All right, I do still have uh, Zippy here, I want to check in with them real quick, see if there's something suggested in making a comment. Uh, Zippy, I've sent you an unmute request on Zoom. Um, okay, I'm just going to move on there. Uh, the next hand I have up is from Jeremy Pickens. Uh, Jeremy Pickens, I've sent you permission to speak and asked you to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, will you please confirm your first and last name?
Uh, my name's Jeremy Pickens. My wife and I own approximately six acres at nineteen three twenty Dallas Court. And we purchased that land in August of twenty twenty, it's on the northwest corner bordering the proposed cultivation project. We're speaking in opposition of this project for a few reasons. The, one of the high points is water. You know, we, we have horses and animals, and we plan on developing that property this year. And we're going to be building a house and living out there. You know, the, the, the amount of water required for a grow this size is going to be staggering. You know, with You know, with only two wells and not even knowing, you know, how much water is being produced out of those wells raises a lot of questions. One of the other concerns that I'm having is just the general safety of my family. You know, every single year in this county, these pot grow sites get robbed from people outside of the area. They wait till around harvest time, they come in from other areas and they rip them off. And there's nothing stopping somebody from driving through my land to get to their marijuana site. And at that point, anything could happen. And it's happened in this county many times over the years. That's all I have to say.
Hey, thank you for your comment. Let's move to the next hand, please.
All right, the next hand I have up is from Olivia Kud. Olivia, I've sent you, oh, you're muted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Yes, hello, my name's Olivia Kud. I live on Jaclyn Drive, just about 50 feet from the Harrington property line. I'd like to start by saying I am not anti-marijuana and I am not against legal cannabis cultivation. I am against cannabis grows in a residential neighborhood. And I am against all new applications for commercial growing this year due to the extreme drought rating in South Lake County. My argument is this. This is the, this is the wrong place and the wrong time for a commercial grow to be approved of an this property is surrounded by residential homeowners with a superhead setting, surrounded by children playing, riding their bikes and walking their dogs. No streetlights or sidewalks on the roads leading to Harrington. The constant traffic from this grow and distribution license of 40 to 80 trips a day will put our children in danger. Drivers will find it hard to see pedestrians, especially small children because of the tight turns and mountainous terrain. In addition, each homeowner surrounding this property is reliant on well water. The National Drought Mitigation Center shows South Lake County to be in an extreme drought zone and it's only April. This commercial grow expects to use over 4.7 million gallons of water per year. I am aware that Lake County zoning does not impose well water productivity minimums. But a water availability analysis is extremely important to ensure the excessive water needed for this commercial grow does not deplete the aquifer we are completely dependent on for our homes as well as fire suppression. Remember, this area has been under evacuation order for major wildfires in five years. In closing, I just have, I've read that words in Lake County, even in Middletown, it may seem like a less than significant impact. But let me assure you that for Shadow Hills and Donary Ridge subdivisions and for Rimrock and Hidden Valley ranchos, we will smell, taste and see a significant impact. Our, our water will feel a significant impact. Please put your feet in our shoes. Please prioritize the safety of our Lake County residents and their children in the surrounding neighborhoods. Help us protect the underground water fur. Sorry, help us underground aquifer and give us a fighting chance to save our neighborhood from the next wildfire. I request this application be denied at this location and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Let me proceed to the next hand, please.
All right, I had earlier moved Zippy over and I was hearing them during that last comment. So I want to check in with them again. Zippy, if you still like to make a comment, will you please confirm your first and last name?
Thomas Laughlin.
Ah, yes, I can hear you.
Hi. I am here today to speak against this permit. This is not the right time or the right place for the county to be giving permission for this mega indoor growing concern. Centered squarely in the middle of what is a rural residential area, with the exception of HBL, a residential area with a suburban density pattern, there are numerous concerns that create a situation where this type of business is completely inappropriate. Let me list a few. The business is requesting 15 commercial pot growing permits to be grown in 40 greenhouses, around 40 greenhouses, 400,000 square foot feet of growing space. Five new well permits have either been requested or have been issued that would use millions of gallons of water. Apparently, we are talking about a 24/7, 365 type of operation on the premises. This is a massive operation. What will be the impact to neighbors? Many. How could this be concealed to neighbors in a residential setting? It can't. The visuals, the smell and the traffic resulting from such an operation could only have a vastly negative impact on neighbors. It is not the sort of place that belongs among homes. Property values will instantly decrease. And the reason that people have spent millions of dollars building homes in this area will be destroyed. Where I come from, the view is money. This would destroy that value in our property. The beginning of a serious drought that who knows how long it will last. Why would we be choosing to put that kind of pressure on our aquifer at this time? Millions of gallons of water that property owners depend on for their lives will go to a for-profit mega indoor pot growing complex. How does that make sense? What, where is an environmental impact for, for on this pro, project? Seems to me that the environmental impact concerns are an integral part of this application. The business would offer little economic opportunity for Lake County residents. How many jobs would be created by this? What prospects are there of this business giving back to the community where it exists? Seems very minimal to me. The noise, traffic and activity for such a business would be a huge burden on neighbors. How could it not be? This would not be a quiet operation, given the proposed extent of its ambitions. There would be no way to mitigate the effects of this sort of business being in our midst. I've listened to them drilling a well for at least two weeks this month. The sound of that travels right up the hill along with related clanging of tools, voices, et cetera. Highly irritating and not why I built here. The resulting sound from the activity of running this business could only be worse and be greater. These people have already shown themselves not interested in working with neighbors.
Thomas, I'm sorry, we've hit our three minute timeframe.
Okay, so I urge you to reject this proposal, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Christina, if you can, please, Commissioner Price take over the meeting.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, enjoy your afternoon. Jake, if we can get the next person in the Zoom room to speak, please.
Right, the next hand I have up is from Doug Berman. Doug, I've sent you a, I've sent you permission to speak and it looks like you're muted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Yes, my name is Doug Berman. Pardon me?
Yes, we can hear you, thank you.
Okay, very good. All right, I, I do appreciate the opportunity to, to make my comments. I would like to echo the comments made by the lady, I believe her first name was Olivia. When she started, when she prefaced her comments by saying she was neither opposed to cannabis grows or cannabis, I would say the same thing. I am a resident of Hidden Valley Lake. I own several vacant land parcels that were impacted by the drought and did not have use or marketability of those properties for close to six years. But the main thrust of my comment would be Lake County is a, is a very sparse, sparsely populated county. I looked it up, there's 850,000 acres of which there is a population of only 65,000. We have 3,300 property owners within Hidden Valley Lake. And it's the second highest population area in the county, which by my rough calculation is one tenth of the entire population of the county is within at its closest point, 1,000 feet to this proposed project. I think the interest of all those 3,300 property owners will be very negatively impacted. I do not believe that this is in the public interest to allow this. And I think it would be poor public policy to allow that in such close proximity to an area of density population. I did look at the County of Lake, the Cannabis Exclusion Zone map. And frankly, I simply cannot understand the, the logic behind the drawing of the lines so close to areas of population density. And I'm saying this just not in respect to Hidden Valley, but countywide. We've got so much vacant land everywhere you, you stand within Lake County. If you just turn around 360 degrees, you can see vacant land everywhere. And I just don't think that, I don't know how those, those lines were drawn, but I would say that they were remarkably poorly drawn. And that should be reviewed such that something like this cannot impact these areas of, of population density within, as I have said, such a remotely and sparsely populated population. I, I personally don't think it should be within five miles. But I think that is the real nature of the problem here is that the planning, which
Hi Doug, I'm so sorry to cut you off, but we've hit our three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jake, is there any other hands?
Yes, so just so you do know, we do have, we have seven hands raised in the Zoom room here.
Thank you.
So the next hand I have up here is from Dan. Dan, I've allowed you to speak and I've asked you to unmute. Looks like you're muted, will you please confirm your first and last name?
Dan Levine.
Thank you.
Yeah, good afternoon and thank you. My name is Dan Levine, I live in the Shadow Hills subdivision, which is located next to and just above the proposed major project. And contrary to the initial study, many that live, many that live here will have a clear view of the proposed lighted greenhouse array the size of over 13 football fields. Imagine 13 football fields all lit up at night. That's a substantial negative impact. How many generators will be running to support that when the power goes out? And that is actually not covered in the environmental, in the initial study. I'm not anti-cannabis at all, whether this had been a wrecking yard, a petunia farm or an art center. With this many, many negative impacts on the neighborhood, I would have been against that too. And it breaks my heart to hear all these residents that are in the same position as us, like the residents on George Road and how their quality of life has been so negatively impacted. These homes are their sanctuaries. And I'd like to say that according to SEQA, in the SEQA guidelines, section 15021, and I think this has been missing. SEQA recognizes that determining whether and how a project should be approved, a public agency has an obligation to balance a variety of public objectives, including economic, environmental and social factors. And in particular, which means it's most important, and in particular, the goal of providing a decent home and satisfying living environment for every Californian. The entrance for this major commercial project is proposed to be right through our quiet residential neighborhood. Up to 80 trips per day, depending on where you look in the initial study. Much of it will be large trucks and that will be an unbearable negative impact for us and our residential streets. The proposed location for this large project is wrong. Contrary to the initial study, it has many residences in the immediate, immediate area, including 5,500 people 1,000 feet away in Hidden Valley Lake. The initial study is incomplete and incorrect and inconsistent. On page two, it states that the 309 acres is insufficient to support the size of this grow. And it will have to be amended according to Article 27. Well, was that a mistake? Why is that never, never addressed? Why was the study completed if you knew upfront that the grow was too big for the property? Why was the prop, the grow size never amended? The mitigation measures for these negative impacts were insufficient. We're in a historic drought and the water supply needs to be verified and not ignored. There's no data or measurement standards for water, for the power, for the odor or the traffic. Our special road tax district is not mentioned at all. We residents here pay an extra 767 a year per lot for road maintenance. This business is set to benefit off of our added tax. What about the road wear and tear? Who pays? I, I urge you to reject the negative, mitigated negative declaration. Thank you.
I'm sorry, thank you.
I'll be sorry. Good job, man. I don't know, do I have time left?
No, we're on to the next one, I believe.
Okay, so on to the next hand, correct?
Yes, please.
All right, I also just want to remind everyone that if you've dialed in through phone, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine. And if you're cooperating with us through Zoom, just raise your hand at the bottom of the window. The next hand I have raised is from Donna Makowitz, Ma- Mac, I think. I started saying that because I recognized it.
Donna Makowitz.
All right, great, thank you.
I'm Donna Makowitz, volunteer for California Bluebird Recovery Program, Red Bud Audubon Society and Sierra Northern California Forest Committee. And I'm here to speak in opposition to the project. Lake County has proclaimed this month as Bird Appreciation Month. And this project will greatly affect hundreds of species of birds that call the Oaks home. Four species of owls, lots of acorn woodpecker families and hundreds of bluebirds. It will be years before the newly planted trees and the mitigation will become beneficial for the birds. Will native trees be the only trees replanted? And if this project has to go through, could you consider a mitigation addition of nest boxes for the hundreds of bluebirds that will be displaced? And I'll give back my time, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, the next hand I have up, have raised here is Michelle Growth. Michelle, I've allowed you to speak, looks like you're unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Hi there, Michelle Growth, I am a resident and owner of property on Stinson Road, a little farther down from the Stinson parcel that is referenced here for this project. A lot of my comments echo what other participants have stated. I do want to say my biggest concern is also the aquifers. We are in a massive drought this year. I'm also on a well, I live here with my family. I'm not growing any sort of commercial crops. I am very concerned what the drought will do to my well just in the next year or two or however many years. I cannot understand how the county is willing to consider allowing such a massive consumption of water in, at this time. I want to mention, a couple of people stated that at the beginning of, of the review of this, that it's not close to other homes. It is. No, it's not in a regular neighborhood area. These, these homes are on two to five acre parcels. So there's definitely homes right by there, as other people have pointed out. The person who, who spoke about the property said that there's nothing on the property, but there is a large building. So I feel like that is a bit of a conflict of statements. There is a barn, I guess. I don't know what that's being used for, but saying there's nothing on the property, I thought was incorrect. Finally, I have a concern about future traffic on Stinson Road. If the roads end up being overused that the, the Tinlin and Jaclyn residents are concerned about, will a road be built to Stinson and will we, will the Stinson residents now have to deal with a huge increase of traffic for this project? That is a concern of mine. Lastly, since I have a little bit of time, I wanted to also mention my concern about air quality and the smell that will be completely pervasive throughout my neighborhood. I certainly don't want that and I feel that it will definitely decrease my home values. That's all, thank you. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next hand I have raised is from six-nine-two-one-six-five. I've sent you permission to speak and I have asked you to unmute. Looks like you're unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Hello, my name is Kelly Davis. I am a Lake County resident as of two thousand and five. We moved here with the understanding that we live in a small community, small community as in five thousand people. Having this grow, entering Spruce Grove, we have two Hidden Valley gates. The amount of semis that will need to be used, just bringing soil in to just start the grows will be more than you have any idea that they'll need to use. And that being damaging to Spruce Grove Road, which is the entrance, a main entrance to both gates to Hidden Valley. Also, once you pass the Hidden Valley entrances, the Spruce Grove Road becomes a very small, thin road, two lanes, which is also very dangerous to drive on. So then you have the entrance of all these beautiful, beautiful homes that these people have worked their entire lives to create these homes. And the damage of these roads, the damage and the use of these roads is gonna be very impacted on this neighborhood. I understand that these people want to create a business, but I don't feel that this was the correct location. I agree with many other people that have spoke. Lake County is, has multiple acres of land that there is nowhere of any houses involved. So choosing this location probably wasn't the best decision. Also, the drought. We have had two multiple evacuations here in Hidden Valley. There is no water. I'm letting my front and backyard grass go because there's gonna be no water soon. Hofacker, another road, there is multiple grows on it. My friend who does not grow has hardly any water left in her well after a legal grow has put only one of your large tents on it. These huge grows, these are massive. They will be seen from everywhere. The smell will be ridiculous. And if they have to drill five wells to get enough water, that is, that's too many wells to be even- we only have one well per property. So trying to drill this many wells is not a good idea. I, I, I moved here to raise my children. This is not gonna be a good location here coming up. Armed guards, you're gonna have to have some kind of security system, and it's gonna become an unsafe location. So I deny-
I'm sorry, Ms. Davis, we are out of time.
All right, the next hand I have up in the Zoom room, I have Jacob Watson. I've given you, given you permission to speak. It looks like you're unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and-
Yep, it is Jacob Watson. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, thank you.
Okay, thank you for listening. So I, I live on Tinlin Road, just north of the project, of the, the property in question. And my, my property looks directly over this entire parcel. And I've got several concerns, some of which are mentioned. But number one is, is access through a residential neighborhood. And this is a neighborhood that, you know, we, families take walks through the neighborhood, kids are riding their bikes. Imagine forty to eighty trips a day coming through your neighborhood and disrupting your peace and quiet and potentially putting your family or children in danger from, from additional traffic. It would be unsafe to, to use it as we use it now. They mentioned that they'd be willing to kick in on the road maintenance, seven hundred dollars a year that we pay. But the traffic that they're going to be putting through the roads is, is more than our entire neighborhood combined, as it currently sits. Forty to eighty trips, I go in, I go out once, they come in once. The, having a commercial operation, especially in one of this nature, the residential neighborhood just seems highly inappropriate when there's acres and acres and acres of plant that aren't surrounded by neighborhoods on literally the north, the south, east, and the west. Now, a lot of those neighborhoods, mine included, Rimrock included, the house coming up, Spruce Grove Road, all depend on wells for our water. And if our wells were to dry up, we'd be having to truck water in or drill deeper wells, or we have to mitigate that. And I, I think that's unfair for, for the current residents to, should have rights to their water and their property. You know, they, they've, maybe this is an question as far as the comments earlier, but in my experience from talking to the people in the neighborhood and their eyewitnesses, these, these people have shown that they don't really, they're not really concerned about the law. They have stolen equipment on their property. They've had other violations. Shows they're, they're playing nice in the meeting to get their approval, but ultimately, I don't, I don't really get the impression that they care much. And then it's been mentioned also is my concern for, like I said earlier, for the water. And I would like to ask that they be required to hire an engineer, a hydrologist, to study the aquifer and to prove that their water usage will not affect the neighbors around them.
I'm sorry, Jake, we are out of time. We've hit the three-minute threshold. Thank you so much for your comment.
Thank you.
All right, the, the next hand I have up is from phone three-four-four-seven. I've given you permission to speak and asked you to unmute. I think you'll have the dial, dial star six. All right, it looks like you're unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name? If you're speaking right now- Oh.
Hello?
Yes, all right, we hear you now. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Yeah, my name is Ken Sherman. I live out on Dallas Court.
Great, thank you.
And I'd just like to say, you know, I heard a lot of people touch on a lot of different topics, and I agree with pretty much all of them. First of all, yes, the drought, I mean, it's ridiculous this is even being considered, given the drought here, when so many people I talk to aren't even planting their basic backyard gardens because of the drought. Another thing I want to touch down on is, I heard the applicant say he was not familiar with the community. And that's a big thing. We are all members of the community. Everybody you're hearing from is members of the community. And we're all watching these. We're all watching these applicant processes. We're watching these meetings. And we're watching a lot of members of the community having their lives turned upside down, having their lives turned into a circus. And all of these applicants say that this isn't the way it's going. This isn't the way it is. We're doing everything legal, everything safe. A simple drive by any of these places will show you that that's not the way it is. The road that we live on already has a lot of traffic from teenagers, partiers. It's not patrolled by the sheriff nearly as much as it should be, if at all. There's gonna be a lot of problems with this. He's unaware of unlawful activity that's already going on, on the property. We watched a couple of weeks ago, as the people out on Butts Canyon had their lives turned upside down, and then a pot license got approved for members of the community for over twenty years are having their lives stripped away from them. Everything that they work so hard for, all their blood, sweat, and tears that they put into their homes. If they want to up and leave, how are they gonna sell their homes? They're in the middle of a pot farm. You're hearing from the community now. We're asking you guys to do the right thing for once. We need you guys to listen to the community on this one. It's not safe. It's gonna bring in a lot of bad traffic that we don't need, we don't want in our backyard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, the next hand we have raised is from phone seven thousand. I've sent you again, you permission to unmute, and it looks like you're unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Yes, my name is Mary Sullivan, and my husband is here with me, Jeff Graham. We are residents of the Rimrock Ranch community. And I wanted to voice our opposition to this project, and it's for the various reasons that our very passionate community members have lodged with you already. As other counties are on the verge of imposing water restrictions throughout the Bay Area and Northern California, we feel like the scale of this project and the water usage is just totally out of balance for our community. Within the gates of Rimrock, we have already suffered some well failures. And it's scary. And so this is an imminent, I, we feel like it's an imminent threat to our livelihood, given what we've already experienced. Without any knowledge of what these aquifers are, if they are connected or not, we could lose everything because of this development. As also mentioned, I'm very, very surprised that the consultant for the owner didn't know about the nefarious activity that had been going on there. I find that incredibly hard to believe. And so it makes me question any future intentions and also the security of the surrounding area, as one of the other community members voiced about, you know, crime because of trespassing and stealing crops and that sort of thing. I could go on and on, but I just wanted to have it on the record that we are vehemently opposed to this. It's not in the right setting. It has no business being in a residential community. Our property values would suffer dramatically. And as the last speaker said, please, please consider us, not ten or twenty jobs that are negligible to the economic contribution. Please consider what it would do to us. And we are also taxpayers, and we live in our community, and we support our community. Thank you for your time.
All right, it looks like we have two more hands up here in the Zoom room. The next hand I have up is from Dave Roemer. Dave, I sent you a, giving permission to unmute, and I've sent you a new request. Looks like you're unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name? Dave, if you're trying to speak, I can't hear you. It looks like you're unmuted, but you might have a mute on maybe your headset or something like that. I do see the mute toggling there. Oh yeah, still no activity on your line there. Maybe you have a switch flipped or something like that. If you want to look for that, I will move on to the next person for the time being. The next hand I have up is from Carly Sherman. All right, Carly, it looks like you're unmuted there. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Carly Swata Sherman, and I am proudly born and raised in Lake County. Since there is not adequate time to detail the vast concerns I have, I will focus on the water that which is a required resource for life. According to this proposal, Lake County is willing to give up about five million gallons of water for someone to easily turn a profit and take the money out of the county. This estimation does not include usage for screening trees or employee facilities. The public comment from Hidden Valley CSD outlines it best. There are subterranean streams and no report on which one the water is going to be stolen from. Losing this much water will make the next valley fire even more dangerous. Innocent community members will lose their water supply. The report even requires all water taken from site and not to be trucked in. The other area of concern is that the applicant only verbally consented to a water tank for fire suppression. To meet NFPA one-one-four-two, there must be water storage for each structure. For forty structures, it seems odd that only one tank is required. Speaking of inconsistencies, the staff report only mentions the nineteen ninety-seven well report. The county has already approved five additional wells to be drilled as of March eleventh, twenty twenty-one. That's a lot of water taken from innocent people who have dedicated their lives to Lake County. According to the report, the lots are zoned, which includes rural residential. It says these lands provide important groundwater recharge functions and collect precipitation as well as water filtering. Not only will this mismanagement of much-needed water cause wells to run dry, it will also contaminate remaining water from chemicals used for a large portion of Lake County, which a large tax base. The county does an annual inspection, which will do nothing to mitigate because for the other three hundred and sixty-four days, there will be no way they are enforcing that law. Due to lack of time, I am not able to address the fact that the roads are not able to accommodate traffic. There will be horrible impacts to some, to tons of surrounding residences. There's no estimation of power. Page twenty NOI number two has no DBA requirement from seven PM to ten PM. The Middletown area plan has plenty of disagreements, including scenic ridge views need to be protected one-dash-eleven. Measures should be taken to preserve oak woodlands one-dash-eleven, maintain and enhance quality of life. The last but most concerning thing regarding this governmental process is the fact that the buyer's agent for this property was Suzanne Robinson. It is blatant conflict of interest that Ms. Robinson and Commissioner Price, our colleagues, both affiliated with Next Home. The abuse of power and position is clear. Ms. Price has an advantage of not only voting for properties her and her agency makes a commission on, but as well as swing fellow commissioners. The proposal needs to be denied for countless reasons. I ask you to consider the lives of the innocent families living in proximity as you make your decision today.
Thank you. I'll respond to that after public comment.
All right, so the, let's see. It's all right, the next hand I have up is from phone seven-two-five-seven. I've sent you, again, you permission to unmute and asked you to unmute. Looks like you're unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Hi, this is Bart Levinson. I am a property owner in the area, and I want to thank my neighbors for speaking eloquently. I, there's nothing that I can add, except I can't believe that you, the commission, can sit there and judge our quality of life and everything we've worked for so cavalierly. Please listen to what's being said to you today and envision this coming to your neighborhood. On KTFC radio recently, there were a number of property owners that called in that have large grows that have come up next to them. And it was one case after another of wells going dry, of white trucks, traffic, dust, trash, crime. Even if you can legally permit this, and I don't know if you can, you shouldn't, so don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake, does that conclude all of the Zoom comments? Or raised hands, I should say?
So we have one more at this moment, and they might still be popping up. I have Dave here. Dave, I've given you unmute permission, asked you to unmute. Looks like you're unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Dave Roemer. I'm a former thirty-year resident of the Hidden Valley Lake community, as well as a former member of the board of that community, and very familiar with a lot of the history of the community. I will say my biggest concern, and I would like to remind you mostly, is water. And I just need to remind you of less than ten years ago of an approval given for a vineyard development in the Murphy Springs area that resulted in many well failures and the need for the community to import water by truck. that resulted in many well failures and the need for the community to import water by truck. They're still feeling the impacts of that. I would just invite you to look at the current state of the state and the governor's declaration in Sonoma and Marin Counties and Mendocino County, which are reservoir dependent. We are groundwater dependent. We don't have a reservoir base from which to draw water from. We get it from Poota Creek through wells. And I would suggest that this site is on the Poota Creek drainage, which will feed down the creek into, through the Hidden Valley community and the park area there into the well system that serves the Hidden Valley Lake community. This is something of concern and something this board should certainly take under consideration. Roads can be mitigated with fees without a doubt. The impact of the travel on the community is great. I currently live in a community that has numerous unfortunate legal grows that our community development agency doesn't seem to adequately address, including one that lights up the community when the lights come on, much like the Close Encounters of the Third Kind movie, and it turns night into day. I can just say that the impact of that on the community itself is worth actively considering and denying the application. Thank you very much for your time. Have a great day.
Thank you.
All right, I have two hands up in Zoom again. The next hand I have up is from Davis Palmer. Davis Palmer, I give you permission to unmute and I've sent you a unmute request. All right, it looks like you're muted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
My name is Davis Palmer.
Oh, we're getting a little bit of echo there.
This is in the Hidden Valley, but I have some concerns, as do many of my fellow residents regarding this development. I appreciate the work that Mr. Porter did on his staff report, but there are some inaccuracies. And in his presentation, it seemed to focus on the residents close by being in Hidden Valley, but that's really not the case. That's, their residence is within 600 feet from my calculations on Google Maps of the grow area. And obviously you've heard from residents of Shadow Hills and Doherty Ridge and Rimrock. So I just want to make sure the planning commission is not swayed by the discussion of this Hidden Valley Ranch, but it is the surrounding community, the whole surrounding community. And as many of my community members are, I am as concerned about the aquifer. Eric Porter said that there was no aquifer adequacy test. I've seen in the report that the county does not have any adequacy requirements. I'm not sure why that is and I don't know who oversees our water uses in the area. But I can assure you that having 106 gallons in 97 in well report and now drilling new wells and getting, according to Eric Porter, I have not seen the well data, four gallons per minute or 26 gallons per minute. Obviously, there is a reduced aquifer that the property is drawing from. I personally have neighbors in the area who have had well levels drop eight, eight or more feet in the last year. We are in a drought, as everyone has pointed out. And just for those reasons, I certainly oppose this. I had also heard of the stolen equipment and code violations since the property was acquired by the current owner. And whether they're responsible or not, it's hard to, it's hard to say. But if this is any indication of their willingness to abide by the law and the rules, I, it doesn't give me a good assurance that they will abide by all of the conditions placed, the mitigation conditions placed on this application. So I would just recommend disapproving this application. As one of my neighbors said, it's the wrong, wrong project in the wrong place at the wrong time. Thank you.
All right, so now I, just to update, I now have three hands raised to remind phone participants. You can raise your hand, my dialing star nine.
Jake, if I may, can we please keep public comment to anything that we have not yet heard? We're aware of the drought, we're aware of all of that, but if we can have anything that's a little bit, it still pertains to the permit, but that doesn't, you know, a little bit newer questions. Anything, anything that has not been brought up yet. Thank you.
All right, so the next name I have is Davis Palmer.
We just went Davis Palmer.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, a little confused. Okay, so that's who just spoke, right? Okay, so the next hand I have up is from C. Taylor 1021. C. Taylor, I've given you permission to unmute and have asked you to unmute. All right, it looks like you're muted there. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Yes, my name is Chris Taylor. I am the president of the Owners Association of Rimrock Ranch, which is directly east of the Harrington Road property. My husband and I purchased the 800 acre Rimrock Ranch in 2001 and spent inordinate amounts of money developing that property. We now have 20 different owners up there, all unanimously disapprove, violently oppose, vehemently oppose, let me use that word, this development. I don't have anything new other than to say that I find it interesting that when Eric Porter spoke, he failed to mention in his initial summary that the two wells produced eight gallons per minute and 40 gallons per minute. He misleadingly said there was a well report from nine, that was 106 gallons per minute, which is irrelevant when it's from 1997. So I also think it's notable that no one has spoken in support of this project. And I would ask that you seriously consider denying this application. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next and final hand I have up at the moment is from Wendy. Wendy, I gave you permission to unmute. It looks like you're muted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Yes, thank you. My name is Wendy Campbell and I am a resident in Hidden Valley Lake. In regards to everything that's already been said, I am in agreeance with everybody's concerns. So I am not on the side of this project at all. In fact, I created about a month ago, I created a petition on change.org and the name of the petition is Hell No, We Don't Want to Grow. At this moment, I have signatures in the amount of 347 and that's current as of today. And I would just like that to be noted, that there are at least 347 people that have seen this on social media and who have been forwarded the petition, who have signed it, that are in disagreeance with this as well. And I think that should be noted as well. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Jake, as of right now, are we caught up on public comment?
Yes, I currently have zero hands raised.
Excellent. I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and we are going to take a five-minute break. We will be back here in five minutes. Okay, so we are back. Public comment is closed on the agenda item number seven. For the record, I would like to state, I had nothing to do with the sale, did not know the applicant, do not know the owner. I do work for the same brokerage, however, I had no hands in this transaction. So that being said.
And I, Madam Chair, would like to add that at no time has Commissioner Price attended to, attempted to sway the opinions of any other commissioners about this application.
Thank you. So moving forward, I would like to bring this back to the commission and we have a lot of things to consider and to discuss. And I really appreciate the public's input and being active on this agenda item. Does anyone have anything to start off with?
Madam Chair?
Please.
For the applicant, I'd just like to circle back again to the issue of what the community alleges is the existence at one time of stolen heavy equipment a month into the applicant's ownership of the property. I'm not looking for a way to oppose this necessarily, but I just don't understand how, when I have the CHP case number in front of me and the applicant has made dedicated attempts to understand what happened on the property at a time she owned it, we can't get a clearer answer on that. Did, did these heavy equipment trucks drop from the sky and randomly land on that property? I just would like to understand that better.
Would the applicant or the consultant like to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Sophia Hamoda. I will speak on behalf of the applicant. As I mentioned, when, when she first purchased the property, she does not live there. She is not, and again, I mentioned there is an existing structure. It was, or it is an agricultural barn from the previous owner. So no, at no point in time did she reside there to be aware of what was happening on her property. So obviously, you know, to answer your question, yes, of course, these vehicles have come from somewhere. Obviously, there is a CHP case and at no point in time were we aware of what was occurring on the property due to her presence not being there. If there is no reason to be at a property that she just purchased, she would be unaware of what is going on. So, you know, it's very common in Lake County. I'm sure you're aware of squatters and people coming by. We have, again, I have many, many transactions with CHP to try and determine what has gone on there. And at no point in time have they indicated anything relating back to her or the project itself that, that needs to be cleared up in any sort of way.
Thank you. I would like to talk about some things that were brought up about chemicals being used in the cannabis operations. I don't think anyone can use chemicals that, I mean, this is pretty much almost organic farming. So for the public, I really think that there's not going to be any heavy pesticides or the cannabis would not pass. There was something brought up about the closeness to houses at maybe 600 feet. I believe it's 200 feet from the property from something like a house. So that's not going to sway a decision. I would have to look back through this, but I would expect that these greenhouses would go under dark skies. Many times I've heard Eric Porter say that these have to be covered or they have a, you know, a darkening system or a blackout system. I'm wondering if these ones have this because obviously, no, I don't find that that is acceptable. And that to me would be kind of like a violation if we are putting that in, but I don't know if we truly can. To address the one resident who had said, you know, it was 106 gallons and it seems to be, I'm hoping that that 106 gallon is the 40 gallon. Obviously, that well, that well is lower, if that is the same well, the recharge rate does not scare me in any way. But I also look at this and say that originally, when I saw 106, that made me feel very comfortable. I know that there is no rates right now here in the county of what is acceptable. And I believe that it is zoned correctly for this and it is not within the gates of the community. So, so I'm going to, I'm going to stop there and listen to the other commissioners. But those were a couple of things that just immediately came to mind. I was doing calculations on what I thought admissible water would be. But again, there is no set standard. I'll stop.
Thank you. Commissioner Chavez, do you have anything to chime in on?
Not at the moment.
Madam Chair?
Please.
No more questions, just a comment that, understand that there are strong feelings about this application. There is no application that comes before us that has only opponents or proponents. Any decision we make generally upsets half the room and we've learned to live with that. But we do not teleport here from Mars every couple of weeks for a meeting. We teleport from Hidden Valley Lake and Lower Lake and Clear Lake and Kelseyville and Lucerne and Nice. We live in these communities. I live a stone's throw away from the Yankee Valley Road Gate to the ranchos. And what affects the ranchos affects me. I've looked high and low for ways to oppose this project based on the criteria that apply to our decisions. And I haven't found anything that in my mind permits me to oppose this. But do not imagine for a moment that we are blindly allegiance to some kind of a cannabis cabal and automatically approve these things. We give these careful thought and oftentimes we're making a vote in an imperfect situation. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Hess, I appreciate you stating that because, yeah, there's no easy decisions and, you know, we're not here to, to be emotional and to tap into our feelings. We're here to make decisions based on the information provided in the land use. So thanks for saying that. Any further questions for either the applicant or the consultant or are you guys prepared to make a motion?
Could I ask a clarification?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Hess mentioned several mitigation measures, an eight-foot tall fence. There were four in total. Monthly water usage report.
Correct. The trees?
Tree removal?
It wasn't clear on the trees.
Well, to the extent that that's important, additional water use information, it seemed, it didn't seem logical for me to, to me to, to omit the information about the trees that are a permanent feature of the project for its life.
And then a more recent water report, which is actually aligned with the monthly water usage report.
Thank you, Eric.
I did want to point out several things. First of all, the greenhouses. Condition number B1 addresses the blackout screening requirement. And so the blackout screening is required prior to any cultivation activity occurring. Minimum water gallon storage on site. We're actually requiring an additional 5,000 gallon tank that they had verbally committed to put in for fire suppression. And that's in addition to the 20,000 gallons of onsite storage that we're requiring. And I believe that's under hydrology. Condition number I1, which lists a minimum onsite water storage required. Condition number I2 would be amended to say monthly rather than annually as the last word in that paragraph.
Eric, I thought of one other thing and I don't think this is something we can enforce, but the applicant appeared willing to pay a share of the road improvement taxes to the county for Tineland and Jaclyn roads that go from Spruce Grove to Harrington. If that's an agreement that they have to reach with the community, fine, but that was the other thing that I had mentioned as well.
I don't know. I honestly don't know if we can require that as a condition.
Well, it's been, at least the applicant has said that that would be doable on the record.
Thought they were open to that, to entertaining that idea, correct, Commissioner Hess?
Well, they said any mitigations basically, so that would certainly be a mitigation.
So getting back to the amendments to the conditions, if the commission is agreed, we need to have a condition in here that the fence be eight feet tall, not six. And that would probably be under section B aesthetics. And any reference, okay, condition number B2 with a minimum six-foot tall fence, that would be increased to eight-foot tall fence. If the commission agrees to that change?
I do.
I, I agree with the added verbiage, if you could, please.
Got it.
Commissioner Williams, anything to say? Commissioner Williams, anything to say?
I guess I'm, again, my only concern was really just trying to see what could be dealt with water. I know that you're not allowed to have water trucks out there unless there is an emergency. I'm wondering what we can really, truly do in this situation because, in my opinion, that is like the minimum amount of water that is needed for this project. So that is, again, a concern of mine. But again, there's different growing styles, so it could be a little less, it could be a little bit more. So again, water was my only concern here. There had been one other question that had come up, that the sequo, the biologist, the study of the flowers was not done in season.
They had actually provided a revision.
Okay, they did. I just wanted to make sure because, again, I only could see the February date, and I knew that was not sufficient.
It came in after the staff report had been circulated.
Okay.
And given the volume of comments that I was trying to respond to, I missed green sheeting that, but we did receive a second bio study that was done in season. And I think we received it earlier this week, but I'd have to check my emails.
Okay. And, I mean, that is truly it. In circumstances like this, I would like to have seen a hydrologist's report, but I don't think I can ask for that at this point in time. And again, I think that I am, I mean, just in this situation. So I think that our ordinance does not clarify enough, and I think as we go into a drought in other counties that, and looking at the water level at the lake, I think this will be coming into a topic of concern. So I have nothing more to add, but again, I look at that water and see that after this meeting, we are going to hopefully have to have this addressed at some point in time so there is some clarification and it's not open-ended. That is all.
Thank you.
Commissioner Chavez, anything else?
No, no further questions, comments?
Well, then, if it please the commission, I move that the planning commission find that the major use permit UP 20-22, applied for by WeGrow LLC on property located at 16750 Harrington Road, Hidden Valley Lake, and further described as APNs 013-060-40, 013-014-03, and 11, will not have a significant effect on the environment and therefore a mitigated negative declaration shall be approved with the findings for approval listed in the staff report dated April 22, 2021, and as amended today.
I can't second.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
Madam Chair, I move that the planning commission find that the major use permit UP 20-22, applied for by WeGrow LLC on property located at 16750 Harrington Road, Hidden Valley Lake, and further described as APNs 013-060-40, 013-014-03, and 11, does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 and Article 27, Section 1, I, 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 G, I, 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 of the Lake County zoning ordinance and the major use permit be granted subject to the conditions and with the findings for approval listed in the staff report dated April 22, 2021, and as amended here today.
I second that.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven-day calendar, seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission and appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed, the appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 p.m. on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. Moving on to our item number eight, scheduled for 9:40 this morning. This is a continued item from April 8, 2021, with a public hearing to consider a major use permit UP 19-40 to consider an approval of a commercial cannabis cultivation project on a 77-plus-acre property in consideration of adopting a mitigated negative declaration, IS 19-59, on Thursday, April 22, 2021. The applicant owner, CWA Enterprises, proposed project is three type, excuse me, three type A, three medium, three type 3A medium, excuse me, outdoor cannabis cultivation licenses requesting 104,800 square feet of cannabis cultivation area and one type A 13 self-distribution license. Location 25252-25322, 25372, and 25312, Jerusalem Grade Road, Middletown, California, APNs 013-017-92, 013-017-74, 013-017-36, and 013-017-31. Staff.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This came before you two weeks ago on April 8, and the issue of BLM and the applicant requesting self-distribution and whether we were creating a, any kind of a legal issue came up. The planning commission had asked staff and legal counsel to revisit the entire issue of whether it's possible for the county to grant a type 13 self-distribution license when a property is entirely surrounded by BLM land. Legal counsel came back to staff with verbiage for an indemnification condition, and I've been asked to read it in its entirety. This is going to apply to the next file as well. I apologize, this is kind of lengthy, but because it wasn't able to be circulated, I have to read it verbatim into the record.
Thank you.
It's entitled "Assumption of Risk in Indemnification Agreement." I, the undersigned, have applied for the issuance of blank permit number, in parentheses, a blank permit type class permit for the purposes of cannabis cultivation and a blank permit type class for purposes of distribution on and from the permitted property. The permitted property located at blank is on all sides surrounded by federally administrative lands, administered lands. Permit blank, parentheses, permit number, is accepted with full understanding and acknowledgement of the risks associated with the cultivation, transportation, and distribution of a federally regulated Schedule I narcotic as defined in the Comprehensive Drug Abuse Prevention and Control Act of 1970. Sub 1, assumption of risk. I understand that the Comprehensive Drug Abuse Prevention and Control Act of 1970 makes manufacture, distribution, dispensing, or possession with intent to manufacture, distribute, or dispense controlled substances illegal. 2, I understand that individuals who cause resource damage, i.e. erosion control or soil contamination through illegal acts, including the cultivation of cannabis, to federally administered lands, may be subject to federal criminal and/or civil action. Sub 3, I understand that transporting of cannabis and other illegal materials across an existing right-of-way on federally administered lands to access a private parcel is illegal under federal law and violation could face federal criminal action. Sub 4, in light of expressed risks enumerated herein above, I understand that the risks can arise from my use of the above-named underscore parentheses number type distribution permit and underscore parentheses number type cultivation permit for the purposes stated herein. Nevertheless, knowing and understanding these risks, I hereby agree to assume all risks associated with and related to my willing acceptance and use of the permit, parentheses, plural, S. Indemnification. Sub 5, I do hereby waive all claims or causes of action against the County of Lake, its officers, employees, and agents arising out of my participation in the permitted activity and hereby release, hold harmless, defend, indemnify, and discharge the County of Lake, its officers, employees, and agents for any and all losses, damages, and liability, parentheses, including without limitation attorney's fees and other costs of fees, and other costs and fees of litigation, in parentheses, of every nature, whether for damage to or loss of property, including but not limited to properties of the County of Lake arising out of or alleging to arise out of or resulting from or in any way connected with the permitted activity or the issuance of this permit by the county unless such damage or loss is caused solely by the negligence of the County of Lake. Closing paragraph, I have carefully read this assumption of risk and indemnity agreement and understand the terms used in it and their legal significance. I acknowledge that I am signing this agreement freely and voluntarily and intend by my signature that this agreement is a complete and unconditional release of all liability to the greatest extent allowed by law. I also understand that my signature of this document is intended to be binding on my heirs, representatives, and assigns. There's a signature line for the permete. It asks for their name, title, and date, and the bottom of the document has a entitlement, assumption of risk in indemnification agreement. So having said that.
Thank you for that, Nicole.
I have gone through this staff report. I've indicated the nine criteria that are required for a major use permit. Actually, it's six for a major use permit and three for a cannabis permit under Article 27. We have provided a mitigated negative declaration to the state. There were no adverse comments tied to the mitigated negative declaration. We do point out some areas where there could be potential impacts within that negative declaration, which I covered during the April 8 hearing. With the addition of the indemnification condition, and I think it probably will need to be added in its entirety, but I can talk with.
Eric?
Yes?
This is Nicole, Madam Chair. The indemnification, the assumption of risk and indemnification agreement is separate from the permit, but I did draft language, or at least add language, to an existing condition that was already in the permit that required the permete to sign the assumption of risk and indemnification agreement, if you would like that language now.
Yes, please. And that'd be condition number A21, it looks like.
The language added would require for the, for the permit to be effective, that the permete sign the assumption of risk before then.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and read revised condition number A21 because it differs from what's in your packet. So reworded condition A21, indemnification. This permit shall not abridge or supersede the regulatory powers or permit requirements of any federal, state, local agency, special district, or department which may retain powers or permit requirements, I just read that, which may retain regulatory or advisory function as specified by statute or ordinance. The applicant shall obtain permisses may be required from each agency and shall sign an assumption of risk and indemnification agreement with the county. And that probably should start off prior to any cultivation activities under this permit. And with that, the recommendation still stands, we're recommending adoption of the initial study and approval of file number UP 19-40. And I'll be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Thank you, Eric. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Eric at this time?
No questions for Eric.
No, no questions for Eric, and thank you, Nicole.
Okay. I would like to open it up for public comment. If there's anyone in the chambers that would like to speak, let me know. Okay. Jake, if we can open up the Zoom room, if there's any raised hands?
I currently do not have any hands raised.
Okay, we'll give it just a few seconds and then I will close public comment, but I'll let you know. Okay, we're going to go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commissioners.
Madam Chair, I appreciate this applicant and the next applicant's patience. It took a couple of weeks, but for me, that was very important clarification, and I have no objection to this application going forward.
Thank you.
I agree. Do we need to have them sign it right now, or it's going to be, it sounds like, you know, before the permit is active?
It's got to clear the seven-day appeal period first. Yeah, that would be in conjunction with the signing of the conditions of approval. We would just staple the indemnification agreement to the conditions.
Okay, great.
I don't believe there's any other comments from the commission or the public, because public comments been closed.
In that case, Madam Chair, I move that the planning commission find that the major use permit UP 19-40, applied for by CUA Enterprises on property located at 25252-25322, 25372, and 25312, Jerusalem Grade Road, Middletown, and further described as APNs 013-017-92, 013-017-74, 013-017-36, and 013-017-31, will not have a significant effect on the environment and therefore a mitigated negative declaration shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated April 8, 2021, and as amended here today.
A second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
Madam Chair, I move that the planning commission find that the major use permit UP 19-40, applied for by CUA Enterprises on property located at 25252-25322, 25372, and 25312, Jerusalem Grade Road, Middletown, further described as APNs 013-017-92, 013-017-74, 013-017-36, and 013-017-31, does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 and Article 27, Section 1, subsections I, 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 G, I, 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 of the Lake County zoning ordinance and the major use permit be granted subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report dated April 8, 2021, and as amended here today.
A second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
Note, the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance, excuse me, provides for a seven-day calendar, seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission and appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 p.m. on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. Moving right along, our next item agenda, or agenda item, is, it's another continued item from the planning commission meeting on April 8, 2021, in regards to a major use permit, 19, excuse me, UP 19-31, to consider approval of a commercial cannabis cultivation project. permit, 19, excuse me, UP 19-31, to consider approval of a commercial cannabis cultivation project on a 333-plus-acre property, in consideration of adopting a mitigated negative declaration, IS 19-39. Owner is Badlands LLC. Proposed project, 12-type-A, three-medium, outdoor cannabis cultivation licenses, requesting 529,560 square feet of cannabis cultivation area, and one type-A 13 self-distribution license. Location, 21518 Bartlett Springs Road, Lucerne, California, APN 016-32-01. And it says environmental evaluation mitigated, mitigated negative declaration. So that's probably, we're touching on the same thing, correct, Eric?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is almost identical to the prior application we had, this was continued from April 8, surrounded on three sides by BLM land, federal land, and surrounded on the fourth side by a different county of unknown zoning, likely BLM, although I don't know of any roads that lead out through Calusa County. And so the roads to and from the property would have to go through BLM land. We discussed some merits of the application, the planning commission had directed staff and legal counsel to prepare an indemnification agreement, although that wasn't stated, but it was the result of the April 8 hearing, and the subsequent work by the part of county legal counsel to find the best solution to enable the planning commission to move forward with this application. We did have a letter of support that came in this morning from Casey McCracken, who is a San Diego resident. Don't know what their connection is with the applicant, however, they are supportive of it, just for the record. I did not have time this morning, prior to the hearing, to copy it and green-sheet it, but I do want to read just that part of it into the record. Again, per the April 8 hearing, we found that it meets all the requirements of Article 51.4, major use permit criteria, and Article 27, subsection 18, 3, approval criteria. We did submit a mitigated negative declaration to the state, we received no adverse comments that were not able to be mitigated. There were mitigation measures that are transferred onto the conditions of approval affecting air quality, biological resources, cultural, geologic, and tribal resources, and all of the nine findings that we were required to make, we were able to make, which are in the staff report dated April 8. Consequently, we're recommending the approval of use permit 19-31, and the adoption of initial study, IS 1939. We do need to modify the conditions to add the condition that was identical to the one that we had just heard, and I'll reread it for purposes of today. Prior to cultivation, oh, this would be Condition number A18, in Badlands, Condition of Approval, modified Condition A18. Prior to cultivation, this permit does not abridge or supersede the regulatory powers or permit requirements of any federal, state, local agency, special district, or department which may retain a regulatory or advisory function, as specified by statute or ordinance. The applicant shall obtain permits as may be required from each agency, and shall sign an assumption of risk in indemnification agreement with the county. I need to ask legal counsel if I need to reread this for this specific application. I'm looking at the assumption of risk in indemnification agreement. I had read that into the record for CUA verbatim. I don't know if I need to reread it for Badlands.
I don't think you do.
Okay. So that concludes my presentation, unless there are any questions.
Thank you, Eric. I'll bring it back to the commission, any questions in regards to this?
Zero questions.
No?
No questions.
Commissioner Chavez, how you doing over there?
No questions.
Okay. We'll go ahead and open it up for public comment, is there anyone in the chambers that wishes to speak? We do have one, just a moment, Jake. Feel free to approach the podium, and just be sure to state your first and last name.
Hello, Damian Ramirez, applicant. I just want to say thank you, I want to say thank you to county council for working towards a reasonable solution for this, so I appreciate all your patience and understanding with the issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience as well. Jake, we're going to go ahead and open it up to public comment in the Zoom room, if there is anyone.
Currently, we have no hands raised.
Thank you, I'll give it just a moment before I close public comment. Okay, we're going to go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the commission. If anyone's prepared to make a motion, please do so.
Prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move that the planning commission find that the initial study, IS 19-39, applied for by Badlands LLC on property located at 21518 Bartlett Springs Road, Lucerne, and further described as APN 016-032-01, will not have a significant effect on the environment, and therefore, a mitigated negative declaration shall be approved, with the findings listed on the staff report dated April 8, 2021, and as amended today.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Haas?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
I move that the planning commission find that the use permit UP 19-31, applied for by Badlands LLC on property located at 21518 Bartlett Springs Road in Lucerne, and further described as APN 016-032-01, does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 of the Lake County zoning ordinance, and the major use permit be granted, subject to the conditions, and with the findings listed on the staff report dated April 8, 2021, and as amended today.
I second that.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Haas?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
Please note, the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and the applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 p.m. on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. Next on our agenda is our office, or it's our untimed staff update with any...
Madam Chair?
Office news?
It was brought to my attention that we omitted citizens' input at the beginning of the meeting, I think.
I'm not sure if we...
Did we do citizens?
No, we went into the pledge, and then, item one, you're right, Nicole.
You just jumped right in, huh?
So perhaps now we could do citizens' input, and then move into staff updates?
Not a problem. We will go ahead and open up the floor for any citizens' input on any non-scheduled items. There's no one here in the chambers, Jake.
And we have no hands raised in Zoom at this moment.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and close citizens' input, and move on to untimed staff update with any office news. I'm not sure if we have anyone speaking on behalf. Okay. I want to thank my fellow commissioners, the public, and everyone else for sticking it out with us today, and this meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.